All right, we'll call this meeting to order. If I can ask, as you were able, if you would please stand and join with us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. If I could get a motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Support.
So I have a motion by Sabrina and support by Rachel. Any discussion about the agenda tonight? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Vance.
Aye.
Danette.
Aye.
Jason is not here yet. Mr. Fish.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Rachel.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. All right. That takes us to public comment. Do we have any public comment tonight?
Okay, so we have some girls here tonight, fourth graders, who have been talking together and they thought that they might use their voice to talk a little bit about something that they thought could be better at our school. And so they came tonight. This young lady, she was the author of it, and these guys were her idea girls. But I think the coolest, one of the coolest things is that Remington is also a very, very good gymnast, an avid gymnast. And so when I asked her about coming tonight, she was like, "Oh, that's a gymnastics night." And so she didn't know if she was going, she said, "I want to come, but I need to go to gymnastics also." And so by allowing them to come in public comment, she's able to do both things, and her parents made that work for her. And I just think that that really kind of demonstrates how strong of a kid this little girl is and how fun these guys are to work with. Also, Remington was recently nominated to be on the student leadership team at our schools by her teacher, and so great place for her to kind of showcase some of her skills with her friends. I'm going to let them introduce themselves, and then they're going to read their letter to you, and then I'll let you just respond. Does that sound good?
Sounds good.
My name is Remington Place, and I'm a fourth, I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Lacey, and I'm also in fourth grade.
My name is Eliana, and I'm also in fourth grade.
Welcome to each of you, and thank you for being here.
Ms. Dawson, board leaders, these are some reasons why we should have better food. A reason why we should have better food is some of the foods and drinks are expired. For example, the milk is expired, even though the date says it's not. Another example is the food is sometimes moldy.
A reason why we should have better food is so that the kids at the school eat their lunch. For example, most of my friends never eat their food because the nuggets are soggy or the bread is hard and more. This also will prevent kids from playing with their food because they will want to eat it.
Ms. Dawson, we have said some reasons why we should have better food. So now we will tell you some foods we should have salad. We should have salad, subs, fresh fruit, juice boxes, fresh vegetables, ham, salami, rice, and hard shell tacos, tamales, and tacos.
We should also have better breakfasts, like breakfast sandwiches, bagels, and with sour cream, I mean cream cheese or butter, maybe some meat like bacon or sausage.
Ms. Dawson, those were some reasons and examples and ideas. We are guessing a lot more people would agree with us. So this is our wish that we get better food.
Yay! You did so good, girls! I'm so proud of you! You did great, and those options do sound so good.
Yes, they do.
You did a good job with your lineup. Do you feel like in the last couple of months it's been a little better, or is this recent, how are you feeling right now?
It's a little bit better.
It's a little better? We're moving a little in the right direction? Now we just need to take your recommendations and incorporate that in a little bit more, huh? And I agree with you, and I think that we definitely need to look at that. And you even coming forward and saying it is so courageous, and I am so proud of you.
Can I ask you guys to do something for us?
Yeah.
Will you keep an eye on this, and will you come back and give us a report here in a few months or towards the end of the school year and tell us how we're doing?
Yeah.
Will you do that for us?
Okay.
Because I want to, I think everybody up here definitely wants to make it better for you.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So it, we've got a lot of work to do, and you guys helping to hold us accountable is going to really make a big difference. So, great job.
Hey, ladies, that speech that you guys just read to us, is there any way we can get a copy of that so we can keep it in our binder and then look back at it? Can Ms. Dawson make a copy of it?
I've got it.
Yep.
I can get one to you guys.
Perfect.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
There we go.
There we go.
The original.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Go ahead. Keep it. I've got it. Okay, thank you, ladies.
Thanks for listening to us.
Thank you for taking the time to come and talk to us. That means a lot.
Yeah, it does.
I hope gymnastics still goes great.
Yes.
You know, make it on time, you delegated that perfectly.
You're speaking up for kids who have been trying to get this point across for many, many years. So, your voice matters. Things will go up from here.
Yep.
Also, there's a lot of people who signed it. Including our teachers.
And they made you come and talk to us?
Yeah.
They're way cuter.
They are way cuter, way cuter.
Yeah.
Do you have an extra pen?
I do not, but you are going to use it, and you're not using it.
Mine, fuck it out.
Okay, do we have any other public comment?
Just a comment, I just wanted to say, seems how he's so loud and obnoxious, not like me, quiet, that as of yesterday, Ron Anderson's worked at the high school for 21 years, so tell him hi if you see him.
21 years?
How long?
21 years.
21 years?
Yep.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good job. Do we have any other public comment?
There is a phone up here, just to let someone know.
Yes, I'm ready.
Hi, my name's Nicole. You guys all know me. I wanted to come up here and address a few things. First, I want to say thank you for the crossing guard at the high school when buses leave. It's amazing. It takes us two to three minutes to get out of that parking lot with buses stopping to get Christian school, which is amazing. It was taking us like seven to eight minutes, which is crazy. But another thing I would like to address about the bus issue is the PC Elementary. I don't understand what's going on there now. It's even worse than it was before. Not quite sure what happened, but we sat there for probably six minutes today. I didn't really time it because I was irritated, but, so I don't know what's going on there, what we can do, or what's being done. I know that it was talked about being a snake through there. I know that the snow kind of hinders that, but I don't know what's being addressed with that issue. And then I sent some of you emails on Friday about, the Friday before that, and I would like to know what's being done to address that situation about one of our SROs vaping on school property. So if someone could get back to me about that as well, I would appreciate it.
Hey, Nicole.
Go ahead.
Nicole, when you talk about you were sitting there for about, you said, five or six minutes or?
Yeah.
That time it was, where were you sitting when it took you so long?
So we go, we drive up the hill, and then buses, so we have to turn left, a lot of buses have to turn left out of the elementary. And we used to go around the curve right there and pull out, but now cars block it, so we have to come up and around to like the middle driveway? Yeah, right next to the crosswalk. And we have to turn there, but it's been so bad that people are blocking the traffic right there that no one can even turn left.
So it's exiting, exiting the school?
Yes. I know that one day we had a UPS driver blocking traffic, and buses couldn't leave. Finally, the UPS driver did come out, but that hindered us too. But it's, I mean, it's getting crazier and crazier, and only one bus can park there now because there was an email sent out that buses can't block traffic, so only one bus can pull up now. So that hinders everybody else behind us too, because you could be able to turn, you know, one right, one left, but we can't because the way that it's designed.
Did they previously stop traffic to allow the buses out at one time?
Last year, when we did the PC Elementary first and then high school, they did, but I don't know if it would work that way this year because they would have to stop both ways again. I mean, it could happen with, like the high school does too, because she stops both ways too, but.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Nicole, is that an issue in the mornings as well in the afternoon, or?
Yes, mornings aren't as bad as the afternoons. I think that we leave a little bit later in the mornings and parents drop off earlier. So I don't know if that can, like if we could, the buses could leave a little bit later in the afternoon, or, I don't know. I don't know what the solution could be. I had suggested going out the other way and coming out elder, but I don't know where that went either, so.
Okay. And I do have a graph response started for you. I have not hit the send button yet, but you will be getting a response from me on your email.
Okay.
Okay? Because I know that you're going to hold me accountable regardless.
I'm going to hold someone accountable.
Yes, you will.
Whether it be you or whoever it's, whoever it is, so.
Yes. You will, you will be getting a response from me on it, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin, on that, I did have a question in regards to that. I did go through and look at if we had any more signs than just the one that says drug-free zone when you're coming in the back route. Could we look at getting some more signage that's no smoking, no vaping on school premises at every entrance possibly, so that way it's a subtle reminder and then it's easier for staff to?
Yep, we've already, we already started revise, revised policy.
Okay. We're looking at that, though.
It should be on school grounds, period.
Yeah.
Football field, parking lot, baseball field, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, just a little bit more signage on that. I think it's easier for people to be like, hey, you know, signs clearly states that, let's remember to not do it in the parking lots, because it's not just one person, I see it, and multiple other areas as well.
So that's, that's one thing that, as we shifted away from the old policies and we went to Clark Hill, that's one of the gaps, I think, that is, is there. So that's where I did ask Kevin to take a look at, you know, our, do we have anything? And if not, what's, what's, we start looking at a policy that will address that.
Yep. Perfect, thank you.
Do we have any other public comment tonight?
My name is Emily Christler, and my daughter is a fourth grader at the elementary. Something that I brought to one of her teacher's attention back, I think, in September, October that hasn't been fixed, I thought I would bring up while we're here talking about the food. The locks in the girls' bathroom don't work, and young girls around that age should have some privacy. I messaged her teacher a while back. She said she had reached out and that it had been fixed, but it sounds like that has not been fixed. There's one that halfway works and the other two do not at all. I would like to see that get fixed.
Which building was that?
The elementary, fourth grade.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
David is here. David, can you make sure that you take a look at that to, to address those lock issues in the bathrooms? Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Do we have anyone else that has public comment for us tonight? All right, that takes us to Board Spotlight. Jennifer Daley.
Thank you for this opportunity to talk to you about grant activity over the last 11 months that I've been with you in this capacity. What I'd like to start with is to give you some background about grants and the grant award process, and then we're going to look at the funding from the two of our local foundations, the Gerber Foundation and also the Fremont Area Community Foundation. We'll then have an opportunity to review some numbers and look at what was impacting the grant cycle. So if I could draw your attention to the language on this slide, it says here that under general operations, it's unrestricted dollars. Many times, that's the funding that people and organizations will go to to meet their general operation needs. We also have programmatic funding, and that's restricted dollars. Those are awarded for a specific program, a specific project, a specific initiative. We also have capital funding. Capital funding right now within the middle school, the Be Nice Cafe, would be considered an example of capital funding, and those are usually restricted dollars, again, for furniture or equipment or construction or improvements. It's harder to find capital funding right now. If we were in a capital campaign, that would be a different situation, but where we're at right now, it's just harder to find capital funding. And then there's also unrestricted or restricted funding for event sponsorships. The funds that I'm going to report on today are all restricted funds. On the next slide, it says the grant process. I wanted to let you know that grants operate in a process, and there are three different parts to this process, so you will see that we'll be moving counterclockwise through this slide. First of all, and I also want to say that once you're into, once your institution has an established grant program, you can be in either one of these processes with different grants at different times. So it's not just a clean start at one, go through three, start at one again. So for the area number one, where you start, we have to look at institutional readiness and whether or not we have a needs assessment. What are our specific needs and what are those priorities for those needs? Do we have the people in place that we need? Those would be our project directors that are going to be in charge of making sure that this program or this project is completed. Do we have everyone on the same page and everyone committed to this project? That would be an institutional commitment, and that would mean that the focus would be on raising money for the priorities. Then we have to look for fit. Typical foundations are created to meet certain fits, certain needs, certain, and there are specific measurements for success. There are, there's an eligibility criteria here. Many times, what I've found for us, since this is the first time I've worked for a public education institution, I've been working for colleges, but what I have found here is that a lot of times the eligibility criteria includes geographic location, whether or not we are a 501(c)(3) tax status, which is a nonprofit tax status, we are not. And then the grantors have specific funding areas and priorities. Lots of times, they like to seek collaboration. So then we'll get to writing and submittal of the, of the proposal. That takes a lot of time, bringing people together, putting together a plan, saying how we're going to accomplish this plan, saying what outcomes we hope to achieve. So then we move on to the grant award. Let's say we get the award. What we'll have to do then is set up accounts. Each grant should have its own separate account to avoid co-mingling of any money, and also because each grant has a specific budget. And then you have your expenses that go against that budget and that budget alone. That's what you will report back out on. We have to look, so what we do, and what Kim Anderson and I have done, is we've set up accounts that are specific to the grants that have been brought in during this 11-month period, so that when we can report out, we know the grant numbers, everyone involved with the grant knows the grant numbers to be using to put the expenses against it. So hopefully, when we, when it comes to the grant report time, which we'll know before this because we'll be monitoring it, we'll be able to expense everything out against the money that was brought in, which is what the funders want to see. They want to see that we've used the money that they've given us. Also, we have to set up publicity. Funders are great, and they want others to know how great they are, which I don't blame them. So many times, grant, grants that are awarded will also have suggested press releases or other types of communications that can be used. They will also have specific requirements that we have got to adhere to in order to use their logos. We just did get a grant in from the Michigan Arts Culture Council, and with that grant, it was required that we send out letters to notify and thank the governor and also the different legislators. So that's just an example. So then moving on to the third section, that would be grant reporting. When you receive a grant, you get in the grant award letter, which indicates the days by which a final report is due. This also involves budget reconciliation. You talk about in that any challenges and lessons learned. You provide specific measurable outcomes, the proof that we accomplished what we proposed to do, and an explanation for that, or an explanation for why maybe we didn't meet that. They like to see graphs, numbers, anecdotal and empirical evidence, photographs, and quotes. So let's look at the Gerber Foundation. The Gerber Foundation is a private, independent foundation. The mission of the foundation is to enhance the quality of life for infants, children, in focusing on their nutrition, care, and development. They provide grants through, which they call the West Michigan Grants, also scholarships and PDA, and also any grants for pediatric research. The grants that we have received from the Gerber Foundation fall under West Michigan Grants. If you look to the right of that screen, when I first started, we had just given back to the foundation $2,000. That was returned because the grant had been given for Rally Cap Summer Outreach Program, and they, and it had not, we hadn't done the program. So in conversations with the foundation, it was suggested that we return the money. Now, I've prepared reports on the Spanish Drama Club, that was a $2,000 grant, and then also for Readers to Leaders, another $2,000 grant. Also, we applied for a grant from the Gerber Foundation, encouraging literacy for our English-language learners. They did grant that to us. The award was for $4,000. The report will be due this June. And right now, that grant, the purpose of that grant was to build our dual-language books, to have a book in English and a book in Spanish in the high school library, and also in the high school dual-emergent class and the middle school dual-emergent class. We also have a community involvement component to this grant, and from March 7th through the 14th, we will be asking the community to drop off any new or gently-used books as a way to involve them in this activity for the school. So let's go to the next slide.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
The Rally Cap Summer Outreach Grant, the one that we had to return?
Yes.
Do you know when we applied for that, or when that was awarded, and then when we actually returned it? Do you have an idea?
Off the top of my head, no, but I do in my office, and I can get that back to you.
Okay, thank you.
What about the '23-'24 school year? The year before?
Oh, yeah, it was definitely for the year before. It was, it's not anything new. All of the, all of the report, everything that I'm reporting out on right now, except for the new grants that came in, or the grants that we tried to get that we didn't get, is all, they're all old grants. And that's what we'll see if your question's been answered, and I can move on.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So moving on, we're now at the Fremont Area Community Foundation. Little bit about community foundations. There are over 900 community foundations in the United States, and they award almost $15 billion annually in funds. According to facts from 2022, the Fremont Area Community Foundation is the fifth-largest community foundation in Michigan, and it's the 88th largest out of 900-plus in the country. It's a good-sized community foundation. They focus on arts, education, culture, human services, and their mission is to enhance the quality of life for all people of New Wago County and the surrounding communities. So our mission blends really nicely with theirs. So if you look under community grants, we receive funding through their community grants, also through their YAC, which is their Young People's Advisory Committee, also through their Amazing X Charitable Trust, which is focused on special needs, and through Ice Mountain, Muskegon River, which is focused on the Muskegon River water quality and science, and also money for student trips. Another area within the foundation that we have money but we don't use very often would be our Grant Public Schools Endowed Fund. It was endowed in December of 1998. The Fremont Area Community Foundation put $25,000 into this as a basis for the fund. Right now, we have $66,668 as the basis, and there's a little over $14,000 available for spending. Another- Another endowed fund is the Grant Elementary School Educational Fund. That was created in July of 2023 by Diane Horusberger. I hope I said that right. And right now, the basis is at $26,569 with around 400 spendable. We also have scholarships. We work with them on scholarships. There are 16 scholarships that are available specifically for Grant Tigers. And then there are also countywide scholarships that are available. So let's take a closer look at this. Right now, on this page in the dark orange, you'll see this is all the activity for the Fremont Area Community Foundation. There's 16 projects and program goals. What you're looking at here is a total of $496,873.65 as an investment. Now, I've broken it down by the different areas. YAC, community grants, student trips, Ice Mountain, and Amazing X Charitable Trust. If you look up here, you also have the original due date. That's the original due date for the, for the grant report. So under Summer Sparks, the first original due date was December 31st, 2022. The award was $12,500. The next Summer Sparks Award was, the report was due on December 31st of 2023 for $9,000. And then we had a Rally Cap Award for that in there too. Now, these were easier to report out on because Cindy Strohman and Jamie Presler kept wonderful records. I can't say that's true of any other report that I'm going to report out on. What I had to do to get information on the other, on all these other reports was go through email communication, reach out to people, ask lots of questions and try and put things together. It was like each project was its own puzzle and I had to put it together. So if you have any questions about those, I'll answer them. We ended up giving the Fremont Area Community Foundation $91,948.76 back to them.
Can you say that again?
Yeah. The amount?
That you said we gave back?
Yep, we gave $91,948.76 back.
To the foundation?
Yes.
For, why did we give that back?
Because we didn't do what we said we were going to do with the money.
Okay, and then what was that allocated towards that we didn't use it for what it was used for?
Well, as you can see on, on the slide, you've got $15,000 was returned for Maven Year Three. That was because we said we were going to buy equipment and do some visits with it, but that's not where we were headed with the program at that time. So we already knew we weren't going to be able to fulfill that. So we returned it. The other was for the Countywide Act Outdoor Education Pavilion. They had awarded us $74,867 and we had to return it all.
Okay.
Do you want more specifics on that?
Yes, why, why was that?
This project started with a grant called Nature is Our Educator. And it was where the community foundation was working with other institutions in building up programs. One program was Crop Scott Farm, which is located in Fremont and it's part of a Fremont Conservation Collaborative of some sort. And what they wanted to do was build up the farm so that students could go there and gets, and work on special science projects or look at the sky and do something with that. But it was for programming.
This was for the, our property out on Walnut.
And as, so with the other grants, it, we bought, we purchased, we were the grant writer and also we administered the funds. And it was for Crop Scott and also other schools within New Wago County to be able to have scientific equipment. Which, what came out of that was that Crop Scott was going to then go to local communities and teach so that we didn't have to have students travel to Crop Scott. So that's how the idea came together for the educational pavilion, which is over on Walnut Street, that we're working on right now. The partners for that originally were Consumers Power, also Muskegon River Water Assembly, Grand Rapids Public Museum. And I'm missing one, but there was another partner. And who was our project director was Sarah Simon. It was a perfect project for her. She did projects with her kids all the time. So it was a really good project. And what they were going to do was test the water of the creek that's right there. What happened was Consumers Power pulled out when Eagle got involved. Once Consumers Power pulled out, so did Muskegon River Water Assembly. I have a hard time saying that, so I had to say it really slow. And then there were changes in personnel at the school. And so even though David Crabbe, Kevin Aiken and myself were working diligently to make sure that this project would happen, the foundation decided to pull them, to pull the funding for it. They pulled the funding on the first day that the timbering actually started.
So if I can, if I can just jump in and correct me if I say something wrong here. But, so this is, one of the issues that we had with this, with this property and with this agreement was, one, the, the condition in the title on the property, where this, if we actually went through with that, that program, the way that the, the, the condition on the title is, we actually risked losing that property back to the state. So we had to, we had to work on that. The other is, and this is just my perception, it, it seems like we, we kind of jumped the gun on asking for the money before we had some things in place to know that we could actually pull it off.
I would agree with you. There was due diligence that was not done on our part. We don't have permission to build there from the DNR either. And we are still in process right now with the state and with the DNR to get that.
Right.
Yes.
Yep, so, so that, I mean, it, yes, it's a big chunk of money that we, we had to give back, but ultimately I don't think.
We didn't give it back. They just didn't give it to.
Well, they gave us half of it. They gave us 34 and some change. And we had it sitting in an account, which it should have been sitting in. It wasn't touched. And then instead of giving the remainder, which they said they would give to us once the pavilion was built, they just called the first part in.
And I mean, my, my view on this, and, and, you know, Kevin and I have talked about it a little bit, but my view on this is, it's probably not a bad thing that we are doing this on our own right now.
Actually, I think, I think it's very exciting. The fact that we had the lot timbered, my understanding is when people who know about those things, spoke with Kevin Aiken about it, they said that the pine trees only had, they were at the end of their life cycle. So we only had like three years left. And if we didn't timber now, then they would fall and we would lose the opportunity to bring some money in. What was decided was that the money that would come in from timbering was placed in a restricted, separate account that will be used for outdoor educational programming and outdoor activities. So I think, you know, it's a win-win. We're taking care of stewardship of our forest and we took the money from that to be used to, again, make the place better. We're talking about maybe calling it a nature center, we don't know, but there's great plans for it. It's, it's actually pretty exciting if you think about it. Because there'll be the educational pavilion there. We'd like to move the cross-country trails there. We'd also like to do planting of trees for Arbor Day for, and the district to be involved with that. And who knows what other programs we can have.
Jennifer, a quick question for you. What account was the money from the logging placed into?
I don't know. That was something that Kevin Aiken and Kim Anderson took care of and I thought they did it at the bank.
The money is actually in the general fund. We have a line item that says timbering. I'm not aware that it is allocated only for this property. I would need clarification if that's the route the board is going to go, that it's locked up only for that. It is in general fund.
But it's set aside, it's restricted?
But I have a line that says timbering with that amount there. But I don't have it designated only for this parcel. So if that's the route you are planning, then I would need, we'd need to know that.
It doesn't have to be just for the parcel, but for outdoor education is my understanding and outdoor activity.
What's the, you have the original due date and completion date? And if we don't meet the original due date, do we have to make a request to be able to extend that? Or what jeopardizes the ability for that grant to be carried through or to be rejected?
You do have the opportunity in staying in touch with your funder to let them know what's going on. And you can get extensions. I know that there were a few extensions that were given. Then the funder, then the community foundation started holding back money and giving us partial money, like for the outdoor education pavilion, also for one of the Maven projects. They held money back on too, until they saw some of the reporting come in.
Right, thank you.
Do you, I mean, do you have a sense on why there were so many grants that were overdue?
I think, I think what happened was it got away from them. I don't, I think you had a grant writer, but you didn't have anyone that was doing grant administration, which is a totally different position. You can be a grant writer and have that skill and you can also be a grant administrator, but there was no one really administering it really well, staying on top of it. And for instance, some people, like even Mrs. Presler, didn't know that she was the director for one of the grants that I asked her to help me with the report on. So I think what happened was.
Congratulations on the promotion.
So I think what happened was they just started getting these grants in and, and the programs were growing and the community foundation also saw that here's a grant writer and she's very collaborative and we can work with other organizations and suggested that that start to happen. But it was like somebody, I don't know how to say it, other than somebody wasn't minding the store.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you. Simple enough.
Is it typical to have an original due date of the '22 and then the completion date be two years after that?
No, it's always, it's usually within a year. Unless you, unless you get a grant that is for multiple years. You can get grants for one, two, three, four years depending on the project. And in the grant award, you usually will have, your program will have like a year and then the report will be due a month later.
So why would we have some that are two years out from original due date?
Because no one gave them the report.
Just going back to no administration being clear on that? Because then I go back.
That's the best I can tell. Like I told you, I, there were, the process that I showed you a few slides back was not in place. So I had to go back and dig and ask questions and work with the community foundation as best I could to get the information. So all I can say is, from my experience working in a situation with grants, I think that it was exciting to write the grants, to get everything up and going, but reporting out on it fell out. The fact that the foundation allowed all the other grants to be made, I find interesting.
Yes, because I go back to Ms. Dawson's and it looks like she has hers done in a matter of almost days.
Right.
So is that Ms. Dawson also having administration behind her that's following for these grants or what's the difference?
She and I talked about it. And, and it was her focus. Yeah, it would be her integrity, I suppose, you'd have to say, and mine.
So as of right now, we have like an Excel spreadsheet or whatever that can follow the grant through from the time of conception to completion date and then we can see that black and white, that they need to be completed?
I don't have it on an Excel spreadsheet. It could all be put onto an Excel spreadsheet.
Yeah, whatever it is, yes.
If you want to look at this next slide, we have a new grant process that's in place.
Okay.
And it starts with a grant request form, which has to be seen and approved and signed by the principals or superintendent. We then go through, since right now I have around 40 requests for grants. We went through a grant prioritization with principals and directors, saying what do you think are our top priorities for us to focus our time on to find funding? The grant project director, there is a, for the new grants, there are grant project directors, not me, receive a copy of the completed grant request and the award letter. I meet with them. We set up with accounting. We set up the accounts. They have all that information. We monitor that. If we work with any more partners, we will have partner agreements drawn up. We had no partner agreements. So again, for the outdoor education pavilion with our partners, Consumers Power or Muskegon River Water Assembly, we had no written agreements as to what they were going to do and what their part was or what our part was. And that's something we have to have in the future. Did that answer your question? Yeah, okay. Any other question about the money that was returned?
It looks like the, the Ice Mountain one, we returned $2,000 out of the $6,600.
And honestly, I think that was probably my fault, to be honest with you, because I was doing the report and I made an assumption. Sometimes I don't know when I'm assuming and I know I shouldn't assume, but sometimes I don't know I'm assuming. But I think I might have made the assumption that all the bills had been in and paid.
Gotcha, okay.
And then if you go to the other side, you can look and see the other additional grant activity that was, that we've been involved with. Be Nice was known, was not funded by the community foundation, although they did fund the after-school program for this year. Although we have received information from them that they will no longer be funding after-school programs. And so I'm currently looking for funding for next year's after-school program. From the Michigan Arts and Culture Council, we received a little over $13,000. We applied to Dollar General, didn't get that. We did get two grant, small grants from Great Lakes Energy. Those reports are due and I, I have the dates, there are due dates for those. We were going to apply and researched applying for money from the Michigan Department of Education for our food service equipment, but we weren't able to apply because we had too much of a balance there. They wanted to give to make sure you need money, but we had too much money sitting there to do it. We also worked on Grow Your Own. I'm working on that with Kim Anderson. That's in good shape right now. Choice One Bank recently has given us $2,000. That was an interesting situation to go through too, because Choice One Bank has to give to 501(c)(3s). And as I said, we are not a 501(c)(3). So I hadn't worked with pass-through organizations before and pass-through funding, but that's what we did this time in order to get the funding. It, the check will be written to Fremont Area Community Foundation. They will then cash the check, apply a 3% administrative fee to that and we'll get the remainder. We also were working with Prometheus Summer Success. That program is a wonderful program. We work with Fair State on that. And we'll be doing that again this summer. They have their funding through MyLeap. And we're also are starting a new Summer Blast program this year. What happened was for over 20 years, there's been a summer program called Michigan Magic, I mean, Summer Magic. And the person who ran that program. And the person who ran that program decided they were no longer going to do that. Well, a lot of our grant families participate in that program. So True North saw that as a big hole and decided that they would then champion getting a new program together and got the funding for that program through MyLeap. And we are one of the beneficiaries. So I've been working in partnership with True North to get through all the certifications we need to get through. And we've passed all of them. And we're moving on to the program development for our summer program.
Through True North?
Pardon?
Through True North?
True North.
Okay.
It's, it's funded through MyLeap, but they, True North has the money and then we're like sub-awardee.
Got it.
Also, I, I just want to let you know that I have researched so many different foundations for different topics that we've talked about, certain curricular needs we need, other opportunities. It takes a lot of time, but there are programs that are available that we could purchase that will help with that. And I would strongly recommend doing that if we want to continue to find funding through grant sources. And I just want to also leave you with this. According to Giving USA 2024 and the Annual Report on Philanthropy for 2023, look at who gives the most money. Individuals gave over $374 billion. Foundations gave $103 billion. Requests were 42, and corporations gave around 36. I think we need some champions, some individual champions from our community to get involved and help support us in our future endeavors. And I would focus some energy there. Would be a recommendation based on my background. Do you have any other questions? Cause I've gone way over 15 minutes.
Um, yes, for the Fremont Area Community Foundation, has there been any talk about any future grants that are possibilities coming up?
All of them are, all of their typical funding opportunities are available to us.
Okay.
And we haven't, we haven't spoken with them about anything in particular at this time.
Yes, I was just wondering, because I have. So that it looked like they didn't have anything out right now. Currently, it looks like there's, there's nothing they're expecting anytime soon.
We have nothing out with them right now.
Yes, no, I know, we don't. But I'm just curious as to what we're doing to continue looking into future grants. And it looks like there's-
Well, I've been searching for safety grants. I've been searching for after-school funding grants and grant tours. We did not apply to the Fremont Area Community Foundation this cycle. It ends, the application would be in on March 1st. We did not do that this year. But that doesn't mean we won't apply for Yak funding through their youth advisory group. It doesn't mean we won't work with them for scholarships. It's just we didn't, I didn't feel prepared with a project that we could bring to them to have them look at it for funding.
So realistically, what types of opportunities do you believe are out there in the grant world for a public school to really go after?
I would love to answer that. That's such an excellent question. And I don't know the answer. That is something I need to research, because we are not a 501(c)(3). And that really limits us. So that's why I said, if we decide to move forward for grant funding, I think we need to look at that.
Okay.
And just to be clear and separate it, because I know we sat through some stuff in our finance committee meeting. The reoccurring grants being the Title I, 1(c), 2, 3, 4, the 31A at-risk, the IDA Special Education Act 18, Great Start Readiness Program, those are the reoccurring ones that you're single-handedly taking care of yourself, Kim.
Correct. And I'll talk about those in my presentation.
And typically, those grants are usually done with a, through a finance director. It's just that the situation you had here was that you had a grant writer. And before the grant writer was here, you had a finance director who worked on grants too.
No, I just want to make it clear that Kim takes care of those ones. So our reoccurring grants and our one-time funding grants, you've been utilizing your own resources to take care of that.
Any other questions from the board?
Thank you for your explanations. Good job.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Well done.
I know it's been a bunch of work over the last several months, year, whatever it's been. It's been a while. Thank you for all the work that you've put into it.
I felt like I became a forensic investigator.
I believe that. I believe it.
Understood.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. So before we move on to reports, just a board spotlight that isn't on the agenda is, I think we owe Mr. Fish a welcome to the board.
Oh, yeah, yes.
And, I mean, I failed last month in welcoming you to the board at your first meeting.
We're good.
But I didn't prepare you for, for a speech, but do you have a speech or anything that you'd like to?
No, I just said it.
Okay.
We're good.
All right. Well, I, I wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity, so.
Thank you.
But, but welcome. I, I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be great to have your, your insights on the board for us and-
I will. You're more confident than I am.
You'll keep us honest. All right. That takes us to reports. Mr. Aiken?
Yeah, if you've heard anything, we were having some issues with one of the main sewer lines at the high school. We've got some tree roots growing in it. Right, as of right now, Dave brought in New Echo Plumbing. They ran a snake with a cutting head to cut out all the roots. It's working. He's working on a long-term fix. It should get us through, tell everything on thaws and we can get there. I think what, he spent two days over there now, working on it, two different times. It's becoming a real pain in the rear end for him, I think.
Are the, are the, is it going under live trees right now? Or is this from trees that have been cut down?
Cut down, I believe, right, Dave? I don't blame you.
Yeah.
Okay. We're gonna begin interviews on the 18th. I put on there Wednesday, but we're gonna begin interviews for the MTSS Curriculum Director position next Tuesday. That position will begin on July 1st. I'd like to congratulate the wrestling team on winning the team district last Thursday night. An accomplishment for them. And we are going to be making some changes down at the fitness center with Michelle Beard retiring. We're gonna go to more of a set hours with a keyless entry. We've got the key fobs now that we can monitor who's going in and out. With their membership, they get a key fob. I think that's a $20 one-time fee for the fob. They will have access between set hours. So we're not gonna have to hire somebody to go ma, or monitor and take care of it. We'll just rotate through. Custodians will keep it clean and we'll check in on a weekly basis on equipment and make sure things are in working order.
We already have the RFID scanner at the door?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we're extending the hours a little bit, so you have a little more opportunity for people to get in there.
Yep. That's kind of been Kim's project and it's, I think it's gonna work out really well for what we want to do for our community. Dave has been working on it with our light supplier to purchase some LED bulbs for the fitness center. He feels with the consumer rebate, we can get them for like 20 cents a bulb. I think that's great to light the place and we're also gonna be able to save a lot of energy, be more efficient with that. So thank you, Dave, for that. And the High School Musical will be running this year, February 27th through March 1st. I encourage everybody to come watch that. Lucas, I, we don't pay him enough. He puts more hours in than anybody I know for something like this. He holds these kids to a very high standard. And more importantly, he holds himself to a high standard. And I think we're fortunate to have Jim here to work with him on that and help out.
Absolutely.
So thank you very much, guys.
Yep. Any questions for Mr. Aiken? We're not gonna have to cover the lights in the fitness center with green paper or anything to cut down the-
I, I hope not.
Intensity, right?
I hope not.
That's always interesting to me when I see we, you know, when we upgrade. And I, it's not just here, I even see it up at the county building.
It's everywhere.
Where they upgrade to LED lights and then they're covering the lights because they're too bright. You know, they've got too high of a Kelvin or radiant, whatever it is.
No comment.
All right. No questions for Mr. Aiken? All right. Takes us to Mrs. Anderson.
Okay, so I'm just presenting my budget amendment, my February budget amendment. And I have some slides in here that are just informative before we actually get into the budget. So-
Can you, can you pull that mic just a little closer?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna highlight like in June what the adopted budget was compared to some of the revisions I have for February here. We projected a decrease and we had a much larger decrease than we had projected. So it was an additional $830,000 loss in revenue for us there. I also had predicted a possible $241 foundation allowance increase that we did not get. They got, the governor did not give us that. We had an increase, we were, we were anticipating a 4.1% increase on our insurance and it ended up only being a 2% increase on insurance. So these were just some of the differences that were a little bit different than what I had anticipated. The next slide here is just, talks about state school aid, what it's, what we get. So we get 4.4% of a 6% sales tax. That's where some of our money comes from. 28.4 of income tax, 6 mils for the state education tax, 18 mils for non-homestead property tax. We get some profit from the state lottery, real estate transfer tax, and some other taxes. Until the state passes its budget, we do not know what that budget is. So we kind of anticipate this in June and it's very late before we usually find out. How is it divvied up? 65% of our foundation allowance, 10% goes to special education, 7% to employee retirement. And the rest of it is in categoricals. The types of grants, you were asking me about what some of the grants that I write. These are reoccurring grants. This is where our money comes from for our school district. And it's our title grants, our elementary buildings are our title schools, so the money is allocated there. We have a little bit going up to the learning center because that put us at a at-risk last year due to some of our test scores and whatnot. We get 31A at-risk money, IDA or special ed money. We get Great Start Readiness preschool program money. We get one-time funding that, those are federal grants there that I just talked about. We get our state one-time funding that comes from the state and that's like our 31AA, our mental health and safety and security grant. We just, a 97B security grant that helps pay for our school resource officers. We received this year a 23H math teaching and learning grant that we pay for a math literacy, or math teacher. Yep. We received our Filter First grant that David and I worked on writing. And he put together a lot of information for that. We are awarded that. We received the 11BB grant that helped pay for different things throughout the district, which was some of our Be Nice programming, the app that you use for the pickup at the, you know, there were a lot of things there. We just received another grant that Tim Atwood wrote for cybersecurity, that we will be receiving that. We were awarded that. It's not on here. We did lose some of our local funding. We will no longer receive funding for our after-school program for next year. They gave us a bump this year and next year we will no longer receive that. So, and we're not receiving a lot of our community foundation grants, as Jennifer just talked about. The next page here is what a state school aid monthly report looks like. So every month on the 20th, I print this report. This is how our money from the state of Michigan is allocated to us. The far right column there that says current amount, the 1.56, that is what we received in January. So every month I print this out, I do journal entries, I allocate these. And this is our funding from the state of Michigan. And that is how it is broke down. Where does the money go to educate our kids? An average of 80 to 85% is salary and benefits. Teachers, counselors, social workers, interventionists, principals, administration, after-school programs, summer programs. And the remaining is for transportation, purchase services, technology. Strategic plan, I, we kind of had this. This was something that we just kind of built upon, that's been ongoing since 2023. Just talks about, there's a learning gap and we have hiring challenges. There's lack of qualified applicants to fill positions. So we are paying higher wages to get teachers and staff in here. We lost the ESR funds, but we still have seniored staff and we still have to pay for that. We had, we lost the ESR funds and there were a lot of people that were paid out of ESR that are now back on our general fund. We have decreasing enrollment. And I don't know, economic plan would be to reduce and eliminate the impact. Anything that we look at decreasing in the budget, make sure it doesn't impact students. And, but we want to take a conservative approach to keep our budget at a good place. The next thing that is coming at us is the health insurance. And we've been hearing about this for months and nothing has been decided. So we are anticipating this huge increase on our health insurance. And that bill was on the governor's desk and after the election, it didn't get signed by the governor. So it's still in the air exactly what they're going to do. But to explain what I'm trying to say here is, up here in the blue where it says the increased 2% health insurance caps, that's what the district pays. We are currently, that is the cap that we pay. The $7,718 is for single person. The $16,141 is what we pay a year for two-person and then the family. If the governor decides to sign that house bill that is sitting on her desk, it's gonna potentially cost the district an additional $126,000 for the first year. And then it just tapers down every year after that. But we, still, that's just up in the air that that might hit us. Some of the revenue changes that I wanted to highlight were, we did have an increase in revenue of $357,000 between our local, state, federal. And some of those increases were, like I said, we received it for the math teacher. We received an additional amount for the safety and security, the 31AA. We received $21,000 more for our after-school program. But again, that will be the last year we're receiving that. We received, because we lost funding for the per pupil, we did receive an increased enrollment stabilization. They tried to offset it, like we didn't get our per pupil of loss of 800,000, but they gave us this enrollment stabilization of $100,000. Some of the decreases that we saw were the state aid due to loss of students, less local grants, less ESR money, and we received less on our adult ed funds. Some of the expenditure increases and changes, I just wanted to highlight here. We had an increase in teaching staff of approximately $83,000. That does not include retirement and benefits. We had some early retirement incentives that we paid out. We had an increase in paraprofessionals. We increased hours and staff, so there was an additional increase there. And when I say increase, I'm, that's only on the salary. That's not the wage, the benefit portion. We also, there was a bill that never was turned in, that was not turned in last year for tuition for our college students. So that was an $80,000 hit to the budget that the college was turning it in. It wasn't coming through. I don't know what happened. We owed the money and that was not budgeted for this year. Like I said, we, well, we added some administrative positions, principal. But here are some of the highlights and changes. There was an increase in athletic cost.
Kim, can I, can I interrupt you real quick?
Yes.
The, the bill from the college?
Yeah.
Was, was that not, did the, did the college not bill us or what happened?
It was going to the prior administration's emails and they were not forwarding it on. And then eventually, the college reached out to us, but we didn't know that it was not ever paid last year.
Okay, so we got, we got the bill. It was just never submitted for payment?
Correct.
Gotcha.
The bill went to who? Or?
It was in, where was it, Kevin?
High school principal's email.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
It was never passed on to be paid.
Cause when is that, cause when-
Cause when is that, cause when is that normally paid? At the end of the school year? Is that when we usually get it from the community college?
The semester, we pay fall and then spring.
You pay fall and spring, so the eighty thousand was for the entire year?
No, that's just a portion of it.
That was just for one of the semester?
Correct.
Okay.
So this just captures some of the changes in expenditures. This next page is the actual budget. So you can see what my twenty three, twenty four, what our actual came in, what our adopted budget was. The twenty four, twenty five, I had predicted a fourteen thousand dollar deficit. And with the changes that we're looking at, we're looking at a seven hundred and seventy thousand dollar deficit right now at this amendment. It leaves you with an eighteen point oh eight fund balance. So the amended budget that I'm projecting is with a three million nine hundred and ninety four thousand dollar in reserves for our after expenses. And then here was what was adopted in June, what I'm proposing and the difference. The next slide here, upcoming proposed projects and purchases. Our facilities maintenance projects, they're on a rotating schedule for summer and classrooms, gym floors, parking lots. There's a current balance in that building and sites, a count of ninety one thousand nine hundred and ninety eight dollars. We are looking at the high school kitchen project freezer, but that will be paid for out of food service. That does not hit this, that's our own separate budget. I'm not amending that at this time. The outdoor pavilion that we've discussed, there is money from the timbering. It is all in there, you know, but you will see that come out of here. District parking lots, the lighting, that will all be paid for out of thirty one AA safety and security. We double check to make sure that that, that's considered safety and security. So it'll all be paid for out of that grant. And we will be implementing the Power School software. With that, there's going to be an increase in training. So we had to up some of those lines to pay for the training for your secretaries and costs associated with that training.
The Power School implementation, is that costing us anything other than the training?
Yeah, that will cost us. And I'm trying to get a clear number from the founder, from Fremont on that. But I do not have that dollar amount right here.
Cause, and was it NC Risa covering part of that cost?
Year one, the foundation is, they wrote a grant for the entire county.
Year one?
Year one.
Year one only, okay, okay, gotcha.
Thank you. And I have reached out to Jody at NC Risa and Joel Phillips. I'm trying to get those numbers for the other years. I'm waiting to hear on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, okay, second here. What about this wonderful water filter program that we're gonna have to pay for? With that, do we need to add, I, I'm saying it very nicely.
I know you are. I know, we feel the same way.
Is that, are we figuring that in here and what that?
That is figured, first year will be covered by the grant. Following years, there's not.
Will be?
It should be, it should be.
But we have to get proposals on that, correct?
We have the proposals on it.
Oh, we do.
David got quotes on that, so we wrote it into the grant. The first year, it should be covered by that grant.
What, what's our?
Moving forward, I don't know. Is the state gonna fund it? I can't, can't predict.
And honestly, we're not hearing anything after year one. You know, and there's not a lot of discussion on how this, you know, it's another one of the mandate, unfunded mandates.
Sure, sure. I mean, because sometimes filter systems automatic, you know, they come on automatically that you have to replace or they, they shut down or whatever. So depends on what kind of systems we put in on that.
Yeah, I think we've got it figured ballpark, bare minimum fifteen thousand a year just for the filters.
Fifteen grand.
Fifteen grand.
And that's assuming they last a year, which we all know that's not gonna happen.
The testing, the water testing.
They last about three months in my refrigerator and I get a drink once a week out of it, you know? Yeah.
So the next slide here is, call it just simple math, but it's not really. It's projecting two years out. If we maintain exactly what we are doing, and I counted for a forty student decrease next year and a forty student decrease the following year. If we received a two hundred and fifty dollar per pupil allowance each year, if we gave all staff what we normally do in steps and percent, and we, we roll with how we are doing it, you're looking at a twelve point nine seven percent fund balance next year and a two percent the next year. So I was just moving everything forward if we roll how we are. This is what I would.
Obviously, some things have to change.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. And I did hear from a rep that the governor is trying to get ten thousand per student.
Well, we're ninety six oh eight right now. So she'd be making up for last year and giving all she has. They're saying a record high increase, but.
Sure, we, we know why that's, why that's being introduced that way, but that's the, the talk on Capitol Hill.
But still, that's not a two hundred and fifty dollar increase per pupil.
Correct.
Yep, okay.
Yep. That's it.
Good?
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to Mrs. Dawson.
Tough act to follow, Kim. Okay, so I have in the board report a few things. The newsletter is attached and the reason that is attached and the importance of that is just a couple of things to let you know. We are moving on, on the eighteenth, excuse me, in February. We are going to be starting our WIN process. So that stands for what I need. And it is a big, the big piece of what the MTSS system is, the goal of that is. So what will happen, when you walk in, don't walk in on the eighteenth, give us a few days.
Everybody write down the eighteenth, please.
Why, I'm looking at your calendar. You'll be able to walk into like the primary center building and at eight twenty, from eight twenty till eight fifty, you will see every single student in the building move into a small reading group with an adult that is running that group, planned by a teacher or an intervention teacher. And then throughout the day, you'll see that happen with second grade, third grade, fourth grade. And next year, our goal would be to do all of the PC at one time and all of the elementary at one time. So that it's all hands on deck and everybody is zeroing in on this really strategic and important time for students. So it's an extra dose of reading is where we're gonna be focusing right now. We really need to move the data needle for our readers. And so there are so many barriers in place from that, just trying to get readers to read from coming to school as a kindergartner with a huge discrepancy in where you come from your homes, whether it's maybe you were in the one thousand reading book challenge, maybe you're a single parent and reading has been really tricky for you. So there's just all sorts of different levels that kids come to. So we are trying to address that with this research. There's a researcher, John Hattie, really huge body of work. And the effect size of that, so the effect size of point four zero would be the equivalent of a year's worth of growth. And the effect size of a WIN model is anywhere between point seven five and one point zero seven. So when you can implement a WIN model like that, you can seek, you know, outstanding growth with students. So we're excited to get that moving. But it is definitely a lot of moving parts and a lot of changes for us. So it's a big deal and I applaud our staff. People are really trying to think outside the box and get ready for this change. And while it is causing some angst right now, I think that when we get it rolling, we will all see like some pretty amazing things happen with our students. So I'm looking forward to that and I think everybody else is cautiously optimistic. And so the other thing in our newsletter, which is a really big deal right now, is the attendance piece. And I cannot emphasize enough how huge of an impact this is having on our students. We have extreme absences, extreme truancy. We have so many kids every year who are missing between eleven and eighteen days absence. So if you think of our absence like a stop sign, and, and this is not just us, this is national. So zero to nine absences is good, you're in the green. Ten to seventeen absences, you're caution, you're in the yellow. You're getting close to the ten percent of the school year area, which is eighteen plus absences. And so we are doing some things this year. We just put together and finalized a protocol for putting tiered, a tiered approach into our absences. So in the first stage, it's the teachers are reaching out, they're sending some notes that we've written and kind of a note that would let a parent know, hey, your child's missed this many days, giving them a number to call if they need help breaking down the barrier. And then if that doesn't help them, they move into tier two. And that's where our social workers start to dig in and really try to say like, let me help you, let me get you to school, what can I do? And if that still doesn't work, then that moves to the principal level. So Travis and I, and using the SROs as, as resources as well, are making, like doing a home visit and reaching out to families to try to figure out what to do. Like we, we pick up kids, we have just a lot of things that we do. We really are trying to make sure that kids are at school. They cannot, they can't get their intervention, they can't get any of the resources that we have, which are many, to offer if they're not here. And so, so we do, we're doing an inflatable frenzy party at the end of the year, kind of as the kid motivator because that is something that they can keep telling their parents, I really wanna go to that, I really wanna go to that. But it is strictly for any student who has missed less than ten days, no matter what, excused or unexcused, we just need to get a handle on absences. And so I think like some of the pushback we're getting is, you know, somebody has a hospital stay or different things like that. And, and I think, you know, like I reached, one parent reached out to me recently and, and my response is, I would love to make an exception for everybody. But if we don't just really take a handle on absences, I don't, I don't know. An absence is still an absence no matter what. And so this is where we're trying to just really make a point of saying, please do everything you can to be at school. And so that's another big piece there's, that we have going on at school. So, and then a couple of other things, some quick hitters. We have, the one hundredth day of school is tomorrow, so that's exciting at the PC. And our spelling bee winner this year was Gio Chichoke and the runner up was Evelyn Connell. They both did a great job finishing strong in that. And we had a record number of participants that made it out of the classroom paper and pencil test to the actual bee, which was thirty four kids. And that's, that's a lot of kids, that's about a third of our kids at that level. As I mentioned earlier, we've started a student leadership team. We feel like there's a really great space for kids to have input in some of the things that happen at school. And so we're meeting with them at least once a month, but they want to meet more often. And their first charge is to have a notebook and they're seeking input from other students on items they'd like to see in our school pause ticket store. And so we'll be digging into several things like that. But kind of that idea too with having that exit interview with our fourth graders on things that maybe they would like to see, similar to what I think was done at the high school or has been done at the high school in the years past. And then February, we're really trying to promote math and have several different math incentives or programs, challenges for kids. And then Pick My Kid, I'll report out on that. That is going really well. We're, we are getting the kids out in about the same amount of time with a much safer approach. We can see the connection between the parent and the child. We can see specific notes if things changes, change. I had a parent stop in today and said how much she loved the system because it's really easy for her because she can change things without having to call and try to get through to the office. So she can make that change in the system and it shows up directly on our page, so we can see that. And then to address what Nicole was saying about the buses, this year, since we're the last pickup this year, we don't have, the buses don't need to rush to get to the other school. And we need the car line to keep moving because if we stop the car line to let all the buses through, then it just gets further backed up on, on one twenty and then on to thirty seven. So for us, it's a priority to keep the cars moving and getting through that line so that we don't have the traffic backup on the line. So I talked with Donna earlier this year about asking the buses to, instead of like stop signing the whole bus group to go through at once, for the bus, like the cars are stopping when there's not another space for them to go across that space where the buses come out. And when the cars are both stopped, then that's like a time for the buses to go out. And then when there's another, when this line keeps moving, then this line catches up with that and then it produces another gap. So it's not a steady stream of the buses going out and there is more waiting time, but it's so the car line can keep moving. Otherwise, we have, we have the problem with getting down toward thirty seven. But otherwise, the, the movement and like the orderliness of Pick My Kid has been really great. And the kids are all inside staying warm as well as most of the staff. My thumbs still aren't thawed out from today because I forgot my gloves and I was doing part, somebody else's role. And so, so it's been great. I think we have, we were worried about getting it started, but I, I think everybody's on board with it's functioning well and doing the job that we had hoped that it would do. And then one more quick thing is there's something from SETSEG called the Education Excellence Award. And they are giving out ten of those awards throughout the state this year. And I wrote to them to highlight a program, the Free Milk and Nuggets program that we've been working on with the goal of connecting with kids and then the idea of getting our kids to start to be able to tap into learning how to use technology in that broadcasting way and getting that interest and opportunity at school. And we won, so we're one of ten winners in the state and super excited about that. It's a great opportunity for us. We get a commemorative trophy and then we get twenty five hundred dollars to go towards the project as we see fit. And then we do get a street sign and it's, it's pretty awesome. It's like, it will say two thousand twenty five Education Excellence Award and it will have M A S B Lead Strong and SETSEG on it. And it's one of the green and white street signs that you can put on thirty seven, like as people come into the district from both directions. If we can order a second one. And so you would see Fremont has that, you see one in Holton. And so you can see those around, this has been going on for a long time. And just a kind of a neat honor to recognize that the schools are putting forth unique ideas and trying to make changes at that level, at the school level. So I think that's it, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Yes, I have some.
Yeah.
And you might not know this, you might have to get in this, Ms. Pressler, but I did have some parents reach out to me that have kids in multiple buildings about the attendance issue. And their concern was it seems to not be excused at the EL level if it's medical, but then it is excused at the middle school level if it's medical. What's the difference?
They are excused absences if they have a medical excuse, but we're saying for like this.
For the incentive.
Incentive, that it's an absence is an absence. And I will say this, in my years, there are a lot of people that, that get excused absences a lot of different ways. So it's tricky because at the end of the day, it still is a kiddo missing school. And, and so, you know, I, I hear both sides of it. There are people that, there are reasons where you can't come and we, and the flu is hitting hard this year too. So I mean, one of the things that we did do is made sure that when we do that inflatable frenzy party, it's going to be on the same day as our family picnic is that night. So those, the inflatables will be there for the evening too. And so if somebody missed out during the day, they would have the opportunity to come to the picnic and have fun on the inflatables. You know, like I, I'm interested if other people have ideas. You know, like I'm interested if other people have ideas, like it's, it's a, it's a really big problem.
Yeah, I know for me, the greatest concern has just been like parents using immune deficiency issues and surgeries and sometimes, you know, like cancer, God forbid any of our students ever get it. But in that case, how is that being evaluated for that student? And I understand the whole, if you, you know, don't follow the rules for one, then you have to not follow the law.
I know, that's the problem.
I guess it's just, you know, how the general guideline falls for students that really have no option. And if it was something that severe is the worry. Like if they are hospitalized for a while, and it could be longer than that, I know even for me, and I'm not afraid to bring it out, you know, Brielle was in for about two weeks straight where she just couldn't be there. And I'm all for, you know, hey, she missed it, can't happen, right? Don't have a problem with it. But for other parents, they're just asking, how's that being evaluated? And if that's even going to be, or those kids just miss out too.
Right. Yeah, I, I mean, we can look at it again, I don't know. I thought maybe when we started that it wouldn't be quite so difficult. And I think it's proving to be more difficult to navigate that as we get further into it. Because like I have a big heart for the kids too, right?
And I know you do. And it's not to put you on the spot, but then also we had.
No, it's okay to put me on the spot.
The email come through to all parents reminding them on student count day, make sure you get that medical exemption, because it's excused. So then they're seeing this email come out that's like, oh, medical is excused. But then they're seeing your side of it, that medical's not excused. So my explanation was, the best that I could do is it just went towards that frenzy award and saying that that just means you're not going to.
Right.
The kid, it won't be able to participate.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys feel like you're getting a lot of, have them call me. If there's somebody like, just maybe we can relook at that for extreme cases.
Oh, and that's what I've been saying. Yep, nope, I totally, and like I said, I totally 100% understand it. And I'm not try, I just wanted to know if there was a big difference in the,
Yeah.
in the, how the EL was handled to the middle school.
No, the, the absences are recorded the same, because it's a, it's a code throughout the county.
Right.
So yeah, they're, they are the same. We just named this as all absences for that.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure I was correct.
Yep.
When, when students are, are absent, you know, you know, a hospital stay or something like that, do they have the, the opportunity to get homework to where they can work on that while they are absent? So they aren't missing so much?
Yeah, they, I mean, kids reach out. I know that Rachel's nodding her head because she's had that experience herself. And the answer is definitely yes. The, the tricky part is, it's not the same. And so like, especially when you have a student who's needing that intervention, it, it doesn't translate to like a homework sheet. And so a lot of times, like for both, for all of our core curricular areas, it's teacher intensive, and there's a lot. So the answer is, of course, they can get assignments. It doesn't translate to like keeping them up, particularly if they have a really long absence. And like we, we do, you know, like when we do have a really long absence and they're hospitalized, like we can make a homebound plan with them. And we've done that, we've done like, where they come into like a reading group via a Zoom meeting or a Google Meet. And so when we have situations like that, we do work, especially if the parent has the ability to do that and is interested, then we definitely make that happen for them.
I just want to say, as a business owner, I appreciate you having accountability for people having attendance, because it seems to have gotten to the point now where it's not as important. And I mean, we can even feel it as, as school, you know, at a school, you know, if teachers aren't, you know, there's subs to get or whatever, but you know, it's, as a business owner, scheduling, I mean, some people don't understand, you know, oh, if I take every Friday off, it's not a big deal. And I'm glad that you're holding accountable and understand that, you know, try to schedule an appointment after school, or you know, just that little stuff to, to find, so when they become adults, they understand that it's important that you are accountable for where you're at. And I appreciate it, I, I think that's great, I think all the schools should have something, you know, similar where, you know, then excuse whether, I mean, to me, that's a lot. You know, if I have an employee miss 10 days, it's like, really?
I mean, we have kids missing 30, 40, like 50 days of school.
It makes for good employees, it really does. When they understand that they're, and it will benefit them greatly in life, because those are the people that get the raises, those are people that when things are bad, they keep their jobs. I mean, it's, it's, those are great traits to teach to a young student. I'm, I'm glad that you're doing it at such a young age.
Thank you.
I can say, when we sat down and chatted, because Ellie, when she was in fourth grade, she was severely ill and missed probably 40-some days of school easily, if not more.
Yeah.
And so I can say that it was very, I was a little apprehensive about it. And being able to come into your office and brought Ellie with, and Ellie was really worried about missing school, thinking she was going to have to be held back.
Yeah.
Your, the conversations we were able to have and being able to speak about and talk about options, I felt like the sky was the limit, like we, there was so much available. And the staff was very accommodating, even to the point where we were trying to integrate her back into school, but didn't even know if she would last a few hours.
Right.
And so even the staff would say, hey, just sit in the corner of the room, you know, that type of thing. And very comforting, you know, bring her in for, you know, reading time and then pick her back up. So it was an easy process to navigate during a really hard time. And so I thank you for that. It was one burden that I didn't have to stress about as a parent.
Perfect.
I thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I, I, you know, that, that is, that is what's needed for sure, right? I think the, the caution is, for me, and Jason, you're right. I mean, it, it's good to teach that as, as young as, as possible. The caution is, this too, you know, just from somebody looking at it and not, not experiencing it at all as a, as a parent, it seems like it can, it can feel a little punitive by a, a child that doesn't have the choice, right?
Right.
And so I guess the, you know, the, it's, it's just how do you make it so, you know, you can keep, you know, that, that child, you know, energized about wanting to be back at school and, and knowing that, you know, I'm not necessarily getting punished for getting sick, you know?
Right.
But I, I, I get it, the, the examples are endless. Who knows, I mean, I don't, I'm not on the other end of the phone, you know, where you are.
Right.
So I get it.
I think in hindsight, I don't think that the incentive part really makes a huge deal. I think now putting this tiered system in place is going to be the thing that can really help us. Because at my age, it's not the students who are missing school. It's, you know, it's general, obviously if they're sick, they're, but a lot of times when those chronic absenteeism, it's because of a number of different things. And it's really, the kid can't drive themselves to school. And what we're trying to eliminate are those unnecessary absences. And so I think that those are tricky, because a lot, a lot of times the kids don't really have control over those unnecessary absences. And so, so it's, I think it's a really difficult topic to navigate. It seems black and white, but it's, it's just not. And you know, it is impacting not only our students, but our work lives, you know, our staffing issues. And it's just a constant, a constant thing. I'm constantly on my phone at 6 o'clock in the morning looking for subs. And it's just a constant thing to navigate right now.
Right.
Kevin, this is for Kevin, are we experiencing this in all three levels?
What do you mean, truancy?
Yeah.
Oh, heck yes, yeah. It's a huge, it's, it's not just Grant, it's nationwide.
Yeah. Yeah, Michigan is like the seventh worst state for absentee, like truancy.
Say that again?
Michigan is, the last I checked, the seventh from, like the worst, seventh worst state. There are six states that are worse than us.
We beat six others, yeah.
I can't say that.
So we're in the top 10 and not in the top 10.
Right.
So how do we move to number one? No.
I don't want to be number one in this, Richard.
Has this increased in the last three years?
Yes.
So this is, I hate to say, is it, do you think it's just a lazy carryover from COVID?
Um, I mean, I, I've kept track of the numbers over the years. And like the year before COVID, when we did an incentive, we had a really good move toward lowering that number. And right now, based on what we're doing, we have, this is terrible data. This is why, this is, I don't know how to fix this, but we have about 10% of our students, we're about 10% better with our significant truant kids right now. 10% better than we were at this time last year. And at the PC, we are 50% worse than we were last year.
Oh, that's wild.
Wow.
So it's, you know, like until we fix that, I don't know what we can do. I don't know how we can.
And that's implemented PC too.
Correct.
The incentive, so.
Yeah, all of it's exactly the same, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just clarifying that, so it really didn't do any good for the PC.
And you know, maybe it's a bad year of the flu or whatever, but at the end of the day, it's, it's, it's still one of the biggest problems that.
Oh, I hear you.
It's one, if not, you know, it's the biggest problem we're dealing with for regular access to education.
Right.
Carol, will you be able to, or will you come back at the next board meeting and be able to give us any type of indicator on how your win program is, is impacting the kids?
Yeah, I, I think that it will take probably a couple data cycles, so we'll be doing that every two weeks. So we'll start on the 18th, so I would say by the end of March. So maybe, not the first of March, yeah, it'd be like the April meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Be happy to.
Okay, please, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Any other questions for Carol? I didn't want to cut anybody off. No? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, Mrs. Pressler.
Josh would like to go in reverse order, I disagree. That's true. All right, so I want to start with, last week was School Counselor Week. And I want to recognize Mindy Engelhardt is our school counselor. But her and Amber, they work really in, in a parallel structure. So they run our Be Nice program and our Peer Coach Leadership Initiatives. They meet with students that struggle academically and behaviorally. They meet with truant students and families. They have a tiered process that I won't get into, but I can report that at another meeting. They help run our student intervention process, they're 504 coordinators. They serve on our MTSS team, monitor students' mental health. They serve on our MERT team. Amber is a new mommy to Reggie, our new therapy dog, who is at her house, who is just cute as a button, if you have the picture. And they just really put kids first. So I just want to recognize those two amazing women in our building. We had our eighth grade East Coast trip daddy-daughter dance, and it was a success. We also have Spelling Bee winners Georgiana Van Popering and Silas Nelson. And they will be moving on to NC RISA February 18th. We have so many Grant Middle School and High School students that are showcasing Talents and SpongeBob the Musical, February 27th through March 1st. That should be an awesome show. We have two leader students in seventh and eighth grade that attend our MTSS meeting, meetings. And on Wednesday, we reviewed our process for our Roar tickets, which are super popular in our fifth and sixth grade grades. But seventh and eighth grade, it's just puzzling. They just don't want them. When teachers hand them out, you find them on the floor. And our Roar store, which happens once every other week, just, it's just not a popular place to be for those seventh and eighth graders. So Lexi Empe and Angel Velasco Garcia are our representatives. And we just presented that problem. And they kind of talked about Ms. Rivera, the math teacher in eighth grade. She has a Roar board, which kind of looks like a big graph, really. And when kids do something that's good, when they participate, when they, just anything positive, they get their name on the board. So then she does kind of a bingo thing at the end of the week, and she will pick winners. And some of the really popular rewards are homework passes, snacks, those kinds of things. So we kind of talked about how we could implement that in all of our seventh and eighth grade classes. So they'll all have a Roar board. And then they'll do some, they'll take some prizes from the Roar store and then hand them out. But we'll have one mega winner. And I have this gigantic spinner that's like this big. So once a week, there will be five winners from each grade. They will spin the Roar spinner. And there are things on there like homework passes, 20 minutes in the celebration room, a pizza party, snack shack coupon, you can pick your lab for the day. And then they'll get an actual coupon for like 50 Roar tickets. So then they could just spend that instead of having all the little orange Roar tickets all over, so. So that insight with those two leaders was super helpful for us. We're going to implement that this coming week, so we're excited. You'll probably see a Facebook post of some, some winners. And kids love to spin that thing, it sounds just like a, very, very cool, so. Early release, and well, from MTSS, we have decided that we just need to like freeze for a while and give time to something well. That's difficult for me, because I want to go, go, go and continue to improve. And thank God I have Lance to say, Jane, slow down. So we, we started some professional development last year around co-taught teaching. And that also includes our para pros. We have some para pros that are dynamic, that really step in as a teacher many times with subbing. And, you know, they're in the, in, in the classrooms every single day. So we invited them to our early release. Well, so last year, we started the conversation, we did some co-taught planning time for teachers to work together. And then this year, we decided to bring it back. One, because we have fresh new teachers, and we have some fresh new para pros. And there's a lot of times that educators get stuck in what I'm used to and what I'm comfortable with. And so we wanted to bring back some, some different co-taught structures that really work in the classroom. And we, we gave teachers some time to collaborate. There were some seasoned teachers who shared some ideas. And then they got together and really set a goal to try a different structure. And then we will incorporate some co-taught planning time so that those teachers can get together and plan for those different structures. Another one is our Every Wednesday Observation Opportunity. We have teachers that come to our MTSS team meetings, and so we have subs on Wednesdays. And so we're going to utilize those subs for our teachers to go and observe other teachers. And really, whatever they are looking for in improvement, we want them to see what other, what other teachers are doing and bring it back to their classrooms. Let's see here. I think I hit all the things. What questions do you have?
Questions?
All right, well, thank you.
I'm just curious how long before somebody claims that your spinner wheel is rigged?
They won't, then they don't get to spin anymore.
Keep Lance away from it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
All right, Mr. Dullmadder.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so mine's not near as long as it usually is because we have a new student body member who's going to be doing some board reports for us now. So he's going to highlight a lot of the good stuff that's happening at the high school, so I'm going to stay away from, from those things. There's two big things that I wanted just to kind of share with you, let you ask some questions about. Actually, one of them got mentioned already tonight by the lady behind me. The first one is a proposal for after-school remediation classes. I don't know if any of you had, had a chance to look through that before the meeting or not. So basically, we have a problem, like we, you keep hearing stuff like we have an attendance issue and stuff like that. And what we end up with in the high school is we have an issue with credits and not graduated from high school. So that's what it all boils down to for us. to for us. So just looking for ways to get our kids the credits that they need. What we've done in the past is not working for us right now, so we've got to find a way to get kids into our building in classrooms with certified teachers and then relearning some of the materials that they've been taught, and hopefully then able to get the credits for that. So basically, what I'd like to do is have them come in for after-school time, hour and a half, with the certified teacher where that teacher has worked with their former teacher to figure out the units and the, what they've basically failed during that time. So let's say I'm in a math class, and I'm going to keep it really simple here, but let's say I failed percentages, that unit. So we're not going to go back and we're gonna, we're not going to reteach them everything for, let's say, freshman algebra. We're just going to reteach those units that they did not pass.
Gotcha.
Retest them on those things, and then allow them to get credit for those class, okay? I think we waste a lot of time with reteaching kids everything, and that takes resources that we don't necessarily need to be spending.
And then they get bored and they're just not even paying attention.
Right, exactly, yep. So that's kind of the gist of it right now. If you go through the write-up that I have for you, there's a lot of information in there about how we're going to select students, what we're going to do in terms of teaching and staffing, and just some of the logistics and stuff for, for those things. And then the other thing that I wanted to highlight was the, the Promise of Summer success for 2025. Jennifer talked about that a little bit already. I just, I think that's a pretty cool thing. When you look at who's doing that in the state right now, I think it's just five, five sites that are actually doing this, and we're one of the only high schools that's, that's providing this for the kids in the county. So I think it's a pretty cool thing, and I did put in there like what the requirements are for the student here at Grant to do that. What I would, it's four sites, sorry, I just saw my notes there. I would love to push this for our kids. Like we, we've got a little in right now with Ferris and the Promise Zone. Now we're getting more opportunities for kids to get college classes before they actually set foot on, on their campus, and that's a, that's a big thing for our kids.
Definitely is.
And that is it for me.
Questions for Mr. Delmater? He went through a three-page report pretty quick.
Yeah, he did. A lot of stuff was skipped over.
Well, I, I mean-
He's leaving it for the-
No, no, he said Blake's taking care of it. He literally said Blake's taking care of it.
He put it all on Blake.
Yeah, I know.
So now it's Blake's time to shine, right?
Any questions for Josh?
No, not right now. Nope.
Oh, that's easy.
Well, one, how many students do you think this coming year in the summer success program?
We will have to put that out there. They have a, Thursday, I think they're doing a meeting with seniors, and they'll get that information out to them, then we'll start sharing it out with juniors, and we'll see. It's, it's one of those things where we won't know until we start testing the letters with it.
Good deal.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Josh.
Mr. Blake. So first off, let me publicly thank you for putting in the extra time that I know that you're, you're putting into this to, to represent the, the high school body at, at the board meetings. This is something that we've talked about, you know, for the last couple of years, but we're finally now getting there, so I'm glad that you're that guy that's able to come here and give us these updates and let us know what's actually happening with the kids, so.
Thank you so much, Ms.-
Young adults, sorry.
Yes, young adults. Thank you so much, Mr. Thorne. I'm so happy to be here. I was so excited when you guys had reached out to me, so I hope I set a good precedent for anyone else to follow after me. My board reports are structured, kind of just a couple key points from every single buildings, so I apologize if they're a little long. It was four pages. We were able to cut it down a little, spare you guys some, some time for sure. And then just also with each, each building, I kind of have a current goal, or just something that the principal has expressed to me that they're working on, so you'll also see that at the bottom of each page. All right, to start it off, at the high school, the National Honor Society had a blood drive on January thirtieth. Versity, the company we go through, set a goal of twenty-five donations for us. We were able to surpass that by achieving thirty-two, and in the process of that, we had three first-time donors and two community members reach the gallon milestone, and overall, we saved ninety-six lives.
Nice.
Snowcoming Dance was held on February first, and approximately a hundred and fifty tickets were sold for that, and was relatively, relatively well. In our fine arts this year, we are having SpongeBob as our musical. Last year, we had Fiddler on the Roof, which was a little bit more serious, a little bit more sad, but I spoke to some of the band and choir kids, and they really wanted to go for a change of scenery. So we see something kind of out of the box, something we probably wouldn't see on a high school play, but they said everything is coming along smooth, and the props are going great, and it's been nothing but teamwork between the band and the choir to get ready for opening nights on February twenty-seventh, from five-thirty to ten P.M. In athletics, we have senior wrestler Alex Rousseau achieved his hundred-and-fiftieth career win this past weekend. This is a huge accomplishment that we have been celebrating at the high school and getting the word out. Also this weekend in wrestling, we had four qualify for regionals with Markie Davis winning our women's district championship. Cashin Atwood also achieved his hundredth win for his career so far. Moving into, oh, and then the goals for Mr. D have been to build a culture of purpose for each student and staff member and embrace the why when they walk through the door each day. Often enough, when I come to Mr. D with a problem or an issue, the first question is, what is the purpose and why? So I hear this on a daily basis. Moving into the middle school, Mrs. Pressler has been working to implement the Junior National Honor Society, led by Joe Malone and Becky Kruger. The program is starting out small and more of a trial run. As things progress, we are expected to expand the program to more students. The qualifications laid forth for this, that you must be a seventh or eighth grader and must have a grade point average of at least a three-point-two, and must be in good standing with regard to behavior and attendance. Due to the Junior National Honor Society being started later in the year, there was not a chance to celebrate these students this past fall, so all these students are going to be celebrated in the spring as part of the middle school honors assembly and the eighth grade graduation ceremony. Spanish Labs, fifth and sixth grade Spanish Theater Lab students had the opportunity to perform two plays just a few weeks ago at what I was told was a completely packed auditorium, so that's very exciting to have. The Spanish Theater Lab serves as an opportunity to push those dual-immersed students to another level of learning. Fifth graders attended the Grand Rapids Children's Museum for Steam Night on February sixth. Sixth grade students in good standing with regards to student status will be going to Kansburg this Friday, February fourteenth. Peer Coaches will also be fundraising this week by selling carnations for Valentine's Day. One goal just laid forth was increasing community involvement, especially with labs, academics, and other activities, which seems to have been a success with regards to the Spanish Labs. Moving into the E.L. and P.C., the E.L. and P.C. had a kindness assembly on January thirteenth. The presentation is called The Force Field for Good. Presenter Barry Lane works to bring kindness through fun and interactive songs and dance. The goal is not to just tell kids about kindness, but to actually teach them and show them what that means. Their website features many lessons and songs broken down by month that can be used in the classroom and for future assemblies. Unfortunately, this year, the People Responsible for Science Alive did retire, so that left a huge absence in a long tradition that the E.L. and P.C. has done. I can remember the time of them bringing in all sorts of animals and wrapping a fifteen-foot boa around all of us, so that was certainly something that's going to be missed this year by the kids. But with that absence, the E.L. and P.C. is really open to pursuing a partnership with maybe The Force Field for Good or any other organization to kind of fill that void and keep some sort of hands-on, interactive experience with our kids. The Spelling Bee, the elementary held its fourth-grade spelling bee just a few weeks ago. This year's winners were Gio Chichoke and Evelyn Connell, and runner-up was Evelyn Connell. Both will be heading to the district spelling bee hosted by NC RISA at the end of February, and this year, we had a record qualifying of thirty-four students. A goal laid out by Mrs. Dawson when talking to me, or a project that she's kind of been working on, is getting food service to have a little more protein incorporated into the students' diets, especially their breakfast. That was a concern that was brought up maybe by some staff and by some parents, so that is currently an ongoing process. And then I have just sort of a district-wide note. Biodegradable cardboard trays have been in place around the district, so currently cutting down our styrofoam usage by a lot. Menu items have certainly been expanded to include a wider variety of items. Overall, the reviews on the new items have been very positive when I've been speaking to staff members and other students throughout the buildings. The middle school and elementary have been pretty vital into these new foods, as they're the first to try it, and give the feedback to, for food service on what they can do better and what students enjoy seeing. I've certainly seen some better things. Alfredos and calzones are something I never would have dreamed of on the menu, but I did have a chance to try them, and they were pretty good. So I'm excited for what we've done so far, and there is certainly still a lot more to be done, like the young ladies echoed earlier, but I think we can get it done. And I think that's all I have for you guys today. I'll certainly take some questions if you have any, but go easy on me. It's day one.
Yeah, Blake, I have a, on your last comment, says middle school and elementary is trying the new food before it goes to the rest of the district. Why not high school? How did you pawn that off on the middle school and elementary kids?
To my knowledge, that is because the kitchen is currently in the middle school, so that's where the reviews have gone from first, and then the food is sent out to the elementary and the P.C., and then to the high school.
Okay.
I believe that's the correct answer.
Ding ding ding, you did it.
You did great, Blake. That was amazing.
I do want to know, sixth grade students in good standing with regards to their student status will be going on the Kannonberg, Kansburg trip this Friday. What does it take to be in good standing, or what, what would it be that doesn't keep you in good standing?
I believe the middle school is utilizing the same policy, very similar policy that we are at the high school, so that's kind of like the green, yellow, red standing. I believe-
Okay.
Yeah, extreme disciplinary actions would move them sort of into the red category, which would prevent them from being able to attend these events. And there are other, like mild disciplinary actions and stuff like that, that kind of puts them in the yellow, and it's more of a case-by-case basis.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Blake?
I don't have so much of a question, but maybe a plan. So I'm going back to your goals for middle school, increasing community involvement, especially with labs and other academics and activities. Is there a way we can get a list of like what those labs, academics, and activities would be, and possibly seeing what business would be better to partner with that certain lab, activity, whatever, because I know the businesses in our area are more than willing and have been wanting to be more involved in the school, but maybe we could start there with just, you know, this business would be great to partner for this, and then reach out to the business. And I've noticed myself, as business owner, when the students come to me, it's a lot harder to say no to the students than it is to an email or mail to my P.O. box. It's, anything that's more personable is a lot, it's easier for the businesses to get on board with it because they actually see it, and it's not something that's just pushed off to the side. So it would be really nice to get like something going on, what those would look like. I know that originally, me and Mr. D were kind of trying to, you know, get something rolling on that, but that came to a halting stop, so if we could open that back up, I think it would be great, because I think the middle school is a great place to start with that, to get kids more in touch with what they really want to see themselves doing in the future, and then pair that with what they're going to go into the high school and/or college or trades for.
Yeah, I'll certainly work with Mrs. Pressler to get you a list of things that we can sort of work on and kind of brainstorm.
That would be great.
That's awesome.
Yep. Blake, I do have one question for you. As a high school senior, and as a, you know, a member of the generation that is definitely addicted to these things, I have to include myself in that, because of course I carry it everywhere too. What's been the, the, the feedback from the student body about not having those during school?
To put it mildly, I will, I will certainly say-
Be brutally honest here.
Honest.
The students are definitely not happy. Majority are not happy, but I think there has been some good that has certainly come out of it. There's certainly some more communication amongst each other for it, and we're less worried about what's going on in the outside world and more about what's happening and our friendships inside that classroom. There is some talk of students wanting some more wiggle room on it, of maybe lunches or something like that, but nothing that has officially been brought up.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you for that feedback.
Yeah, no problem.
Appreciate it. Anything else?
Just to appreciate, good demeanor, good presentation, seriously.
Thank you.
You know, good notes, you know, and good voice fluctuation. I give you a nine-point-five.
Thank you. I will certainly strive for attendance.
There you go, there you go.
It's, it's going to take a tie, just saying.
Good job.
Thank you, Blake.
Thank you, Blake.
Appreciate you. All right, that moves us down to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Support.
So I have a motion by Rich and a support by Sabrina. Any questions about the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. Dinette?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Mr. Fish?
Aye.
Mr. Vance?
Yay.
Jason?
Yay.
And I'm an aye. Motion passes. Thank you. All right, so that takes us down to unfinished business. Mr. Akin, do we have any update on the logo?
Yeah, actually, this is kind of ironic. I've been on the phone with Gary Cooper.
Okay. Ring a bell?
He is out of Lansing. He's Clark Hill, works for Clark Hill. He is their patent and intellectual property guru, so basically had a list of questions we needed to answer. You know, do we want this patented federally? Is it just the state of Michigan? I told him we might as well do it federally, and then we had to just give a listing of where this logo shows up, at apparel, and, you know, different other, you know, handbooks, things like that. So we're in the process of getting apparel around. We're going to send screenshots to him of what we have, um, sweatshirts, T-shirts, hats, and then he wants to have all those copies, so the ball is rolling. Hopefully, we have this done within the next six to eight weeks.
Okay, good. Any questions about that?
Is it a specific logo? Because, you know, for Grant, we've had multiple-
It's the paw with the GT in it.
Okay.
That was the one that was decided on.
We had talked about just the GT as well, right?
And just the GT too, yep. It's the paw, the GT, and then the GT with the paw, the paw with the GT in it, so there's three separate.
Okay.
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 All right. Any other questions about the logo? Okay, that takes us down to action items. Number seven, A, number one. You have a hiring recommendation?
Yeah, we have interviewed and are recommending the following staff members for hire. Mary Bell Alvarez, high school, E.L. L. paraprofessional, and Tara Colter, office assistant at Grant Administrative Office. As superintendent of schools, I'm recommending the Board of Education approve the hiring of the following staff members.
All right, do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Support.
All right, so I have a motion by Dinette and support by Rachel. Any discussion on that?
Kevin, the E.L. L. one, that's also replacing, not creating, correct?
Correct, replacing, yep.
Any other questions or discussion? Any other questions or discussion? All right, hearing none. Jason?
Yay.
Mr. Vance?
Yay.
Mr. Fish?
Aye.
Dinette?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. All right, motion passes, thank you. That takes us down to approval of a resignation.
Approval of resol...
Resolution.
Yeah, approval of...
Sorry, resolution.
Yeah, I was going to say, you've got a resolution here.
Sorry, sorry.
Approval of resolution for non-renewal of athletic director's contract. The Board is asked to approve the resolution to consider the non-renewal of administrative contract of John Norton, whereas the superintendent has recommended that the Board consider the non-renewal of the administrative contract of John Norton due to budgetary concerns relating to the consolidated consolidation of the athletic director position with an administrative position, which will require an administrative license that the employee does not possess, which has been identified by the superintendent or designated, whereas the stated reasons submitted for consideration of contract non-renewal are not arbitrary or capricious. It is moved that superintendent's design shall notify the affected employee that the Board is considering the non-renewal of his/her employment contract effective of the termination date of the current contract of employment on June 30th, 2025, and that he, she may meet with or not less than a majority of the Board to discuss the reasons for his consideration for non-renewal at a time and date to be designated by the Board and superintendent. The affected employee shall receive a copy of this resolution and copy of section 1229 of the Michigan Revised School Code. I'm requesting that the Board approve this resolution for non-renewal of the contract for John Norton.
All right, do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Support.
Did I hear Dinette make that motion?
Yep.
Okay. I have a motion by Dinette and support by Sabrina. Any discussion on this resolution? So just for clarity, I want to make sure that everybody understands this is the first of two very specific steps that a school board has to go through to not renew a contract. So we had talked about this a while back. You know, that if these types of steps aren't taken, the contracts automatically renew.
Right.
They roll over, so just so everybody's aware of that. Any questions, discussion about this resolution? Okay, I'm not hearing any. Okay, Mr. Vance?
Yay.
Rachel?
Aye.
Mr. Fish?
Aye.
Jason?
Yay.
Dinette?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Motion passes, thank you. All right, so that takes us down to letter of agreement.
Yeah, the Board of Education is being asked to approve the letter of agreement as provided between Grant Public Schools and Grant Education Association regarding PTO donations for Lindsay Phillips. It is recommended by the superintendent to approve the following letter of agreement.
All right, entertain a motion, please?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion by Sabrina and support by Rachel. Any discussion about this?
I just think it's so nice.
Yeah.
That's awesome that our staff steps up and does that.
I would agree. It's, this is, this just shows the level of care and commitment that our staff has for each other, absolutely.
This is the second time this year.
Yes, it is.
Yes, yeah. Anything else? All right, I'll call the rule. Jason?
Yay.
Dinette?
Aye.
Mr. Vance?
Yay.
Rachel?
Aye.
Mr. Fish?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Motion passes. All right, so that takes us down to approval of the 2425 budget amendments for the general fund.
Yeah, the Board of Education is being asked to approve the 202425 budget amendments for the general fund.
I'll entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, I'm giving that to Sabrina as the motion and Rachel for the support, unless you guys are adamant that you want it differently.
It's fine.
Any, any questions about this? I know Kim just took us through a bunch of it.
Yes. I think that was great. Thank you so much, Kim, for your hard work.
Broad presentation on that.
Well, it definitely helps us to prepare better for the next one or two years, to know exactly where we're at. At least we're not taking a shotgun approach. So appreciate it.
Yep, lots of work that goes into that, I know. Any other discussion? All right, Rachel?
Aye.
Mr. Vance?
Yay.
Dinette?
Aye.
Jason?
Yay.
Mr. Fish?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. All right, motion passes. That amendment is adopted. That takes us down to acceptance of donation.
On behalf of the administration and staff, I wish to thank the following business for their support for our students and programs and the district. MPH Logistics, they donated $1,000 for the choir program towards their trip to Nashville. The superintendent, I'm recommending the acceptance of this donation.
All right, do I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion by Rich and support by Sabrina. Any discussion?
I would just like to thank MPH Logistics for their donation.
They are very willing to help out anything with our school system. And being past students here himself.
Mm-hmm, very grateful.
Yeah, they've been very generous. You know, they gave us a sizable donation for the sports program, you know, a couple of years ago.
Yep.
I do know that it sounds like we had a little bit of trouble in the past communicating back with them on how we use that. I'm just, I'm thrusting that we're going to do a better job.
I guess we have.
Yeah.
I don't know, I didn't, I had a conversation with them and it seemed to go well.
Yeah, I know that was before your time, but we'll...
Which says it all.
We'll do a better job this time around with them, for sure. All right, any other discussion about this? All right, Rachel?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Dinette?
Aye.
Jason?
Yay.
Mr. Fish?
Aye.
Mr. Vance?
Yay.
And I'm an aye. All right, motion passes, thank you. All right, so that takes us down to first policy resolution for calling for a single sinking fund. Wow.
A sinkhole.
A sinkhole.
I'd rather not call it that.
Can I redo that?
Yeah, you might want to.
Resolution, calling for a sinking fund special election. Wow.
The Board is being asked to adopt the resolution attached that is calling for a sinking fund special election to be held on August 5th, 2025. I am recommending that the Board adopt a sinking fund special election resolution.
All right. So we have, we have a resolution here. Does somebody want to actually read that resolution for us to make the motion? Excuse me.
Where are we starting on this?
I would start right here at the whereas.
Okay. Whereas, one, this Board intends to submit a proposition at a special election to be held on Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. Two, on or before 4:00 PM on Tuesday, May 13th, 2025, the Board shall certify any ballot proposition to be submitted to the voters at such election to the election coordinator or coordinators designated to conduct elections within the district, the election coordinator. Now therefore, be it resolved that, one, a special election of the school electors of the district be called and held on Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. Two, the proposition to be voted on at a special election shall be stated on the ballots in substantially the form as set forth in exhibit A. Three, the election coordinator is requested to, A, utilize the Times Indicator, a newspaper published or of general circulation within the district for publication of notices in accordance with the election law requirements. B, utilize ballot proposition summary information as prepared by legal counsel in the forms of the notices of last day of registration and election in substantially the form as set forth in exhibit B attached here too. C, provide proof copy of the ballot to the district and its legal counsel in sufficient time to allow the ballot to be proofread prior to printing. Four, the secretary of this Board is hereby authorized and directed to file a copy of this resolution with the election coordinator and with any election clerk or clerks designated to conduct elections within the district by 4:00 PM on Tuesday, May 13th, 2025. Five, all resolutions and parts of resolutions and so far as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution are hereby rescinded.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion, do we have support?
Support.
Well, you made the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So Rachel gave support on that. Any discussion on this motion? This resolution? Kevin, did you want to discuss anything specifically around the use and need for a special fund for our district?
Well, we've got...
Sinking fund, sorry?
Yeah, we've got a lot of infrastructure repairs that are coming up. I mean, we've got four roofs right now that are coming off a warranty that could go at any minute. We've got to talk about the HVAC systems, improving our entranceway securities, are three of the big ones. And we're going to be holding community forum on Thursday and having committee discussions throughout the spring to come up with basically a list of our top 10 needs. Do a community needs assessment. We can get on the M.D. site and see what their needs assessment are for us, but I don't think that's really going to align with what our community needs are. We may not be able to do one project a year. We may have to do one every two years just because of the money that this is going to bring in. I think it's $734,000 roughly every year if this passes that we would get towards infrastructure updates.
Yep.
So...
And just to be clear, this money can be used for very specific things only?
Yeah, it's very targeted.
Yes.
It just can't be spent. It's got to be a project attached that has to do with infrastructure. And they just approved, you can actually purchase buses out of it now. But it's very targeted at what it can be used for.
Kim, we didn't go over this.
I just realized that I didn't skip to that last slide.
Is there, is there a way, is there a way we can put that up for people to see? That would explain the sinking fund? Is that possible?
And just while you're getting that, we're, Kevin, the community forum, we're, right now, we're weather permitting, right?
Weather permitting, yeah. We've got, our alternative date, if we do get canceled on Thursday, will be the 20th, a week later.
Is Thursday supposed to be bad?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Well, Wednesday into Thursday.
Oh, okay.
So I...
I'm always just surprised, so...
Well, if it happens. I mean, they're calling for a pretty hefty... Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I hope we get a good turnout at the community forum so we can talk through that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, it's not coming up. There we go.
I thought it was, everything was still on air cam, I'm sorry. My apologies.
There you go.
There we go.
Hey.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Just click, click down in the space next to the... He's speaking, James.
Pull that mic close.
Put you right in the mic, there you go.
A sinking fund will allow us to use it for HVAC, roofing, asphalt, technology, transportation. It frees up the money out of our general fund specifically for these. It cannot be used on salary and benefits, equipment, supplies, textbooks, or utilities. But it can be used for any of the infrastructure. So it'd free up a lot of money in our general fund.
And where do we sit right now as far as other schools around us? And, you know, whether they have a sinking fund versus us?
I know Fremont does, I know Sparta does. I haven't checked with what the other ones have.
Sparta and Fremont are the two that we, that I know for sure that are utilizing it.
Have we had one in the past?
No.
We've never had?
Nope.
Okay.
So it's not as restrictive as a bond. Because bond, you can only use it for what that bond is for. This would open it up for us.
Right, right.
And when it says cannot be used for salary benefits, equipment, that is classroom equipment?
Correct.
Correct, because obviously for maintenance equipment and stuff, we can do that for building equipment.
Right.
Yep. And then it said, so what would designate between general maintenance? How do you, how do we break that apart? Just briefly, how would you break that apart for the state or whatever, saying, if we are putting HVAC in?
That, I mean, that wouldn't be general, that'd be a project. I mean, it's going to be project-based.
Capital.
Right, like coating the asphalt would be general maintenance. Am I correct or not?
No, because you could use it for asphalt.
Okay, okay, so, okay. We will leave that in your trusted hands to break it out.
Right.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or anything about the sinking fund resolution? Okay, I'm not hearing any. Sabrina?
Aye.
Jason?
Yay.
Mr. Vance?
Yay.
Mr. Fish?
Aye.
Dinette?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. All right, motion passes, thank you. Okay, that takes us down to approval of first reading of a meal charge and bad debt policy.
Yes, this memo was written to request the Board approve the first reading of the meal charge and bad debt policy.
Do I have a motion on that, please?
So moved.
Support.
A motion by Sabrina and support by Dinette?
Yes.
Any, any discussion on this? This is, correct me if I'm wrong, this is not a new policy, but it is a new policy for us since we've moved to Clark Hill from Neola?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And this is a state-required policy?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions about this policy?
Can we waive the first reading?
Well, we would, we would approve it with waiving the actual reading, yes. So I guess the, so thank you for that, Rich. I would ask that we, that Sabrina, would you consider amending your motion to approve and waive the first reading of the policy? That means we don't have to read the entire policy?
Yes.
Okay.
I will amend that so we can waive the first reading, the actual policy.
Okay, so...
Second.
All right, so with that, there's no other discussion, I will call that vote. All right, Mr. Fish?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Mr. Vance?
Yay.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Jason?
Yay.
Dinette?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. All right, motion passes and the first reading is waived and adopted. All right, so that takes us down to approval of first reading of law enforcement policy.
Yeah, this memo is written to request the board approve the first reading of the law enforcement policy. And to give you a little background, we've had a lot of changes in the immigration and ICE and things like that. As a district, I think it would behoove us to have policy on how we deal with all law enforcement when they come to the building and what is, what is expected of our frontline staff. That way we have a guideline to adhere to and keep everybody safe.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to waive and approve the first reading of the law enforcement policy.
I will make that motion to waive and approve.
Okay, so I have a motion by Sabrina. Rich, did you want a second?
See.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion on this one?
Kevin, is this something you have or will be going over with the staff and administration?
We've, we've already gone over it.
Okay, so they're fully aware of everything.
Okay, good. Just, just so the board is aware, this, this was originated by Clark Hill. They did a, like a Zoom meeting with their client school districts just to make sure that all the districts were in a good spot with concerns about ICE potentially coming to the schools. You know, I, I don't believe that's going to happen, but it, that gave us some guidance. Kevin and I then reached back out to our attorney and asked if, if, one, if they would have an issue with it, but also if they would recommend that we take that, that guidance that they originally gave and we just adopted this as a, just a general law enforcement policy, how, how we expect our staff to deal with any law enforcement that comes. And this does also, this applies to our resource officers as well. Right, so just, just so everybody's aware of that, Kevin, did I state that correctly?
Correct, one hundred percent.
Okay, thank you. So if we, are there any specific questions about this policy, the way that we have it today?
Very straightforward.
Okay. We have a, a motion and support to waive and approve the first reading of the law enforcement policy.
So moved.
So if there's no other discussion, I'll call for the vote. Dinette?
Aye.
Mr. Vance?
Yay.
Jason?
Yay.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Mr. Fish?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Pass. And that takes us down to approval of the first reading of flags and displays, and I, I will ask when we get there that we do the same thing, that it is a waive and approve rather than just an approve.
This memo is written to request the board approve the first reading of the flags and displays policy.
All right, so would someone entertain the motion to waive and approve?
Yeah, I'll move that way.
Okay, so I have Mr. Fish?
Support.
And Jason? All right, any discussion about the language in this policy? I will, I guess before, I will just say that this, this came from the several committee, the whole meetings that we had months ago, probably close to a year ago, if not a little bit longer. And I, I did, I did add some verbiage specifically around the, the flag of the United States that you guys are seeing now. So if there's, I mean, this is, this is essentially, it refers to the official flag of the United States. The American flag shall be raised above each school and or at the appropriate places during all school sessions. No flag may fly or be displayed higher than the American flag. All American flags flown outdoors shall be all-weather flags and preferably have lighting illuminating them from dusk to dawn. Any American flag without lighting must be taken down and properly stored between, or before dusk each day. The flag shall be raised before the opening of school or at dawn every day. The minimum flag size to be flown on district property is five foot by eight foot. Must be flown in accordance with for USC subsection one. Historical versions of the American flag may be displayed in a classroom as part of a patriotic or historical lesson. Long-term displays, six weeks or longer, must be approved by the building administrator and shall be displayed in every room that instruction or meetings are conducted. No flag smaller than two foot by three foot shall be used as a display to comply with this policy. So that is, some of those bullet points are the, the bullet points that, that I added to it as I was going through some of this in preparation for sending this out so that it could be included in the board packet, so. So that's where we're at with it.
Okay.
Open to questions or comments on the policy as we have it. Good? All right, I will call for a vote on that then. Sabrina?
Aye.
Mr. Vance?
Yay.
Mr. Fish?
Aye.
Jason?
Yay.
Dinette?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Motion passes, thank you. All right, so that takes us to discussion items. What does the board have to discuss?
I would like to reach back on the strategic planning committee that I am chairing and ask the board. Originally, I was given three to five staff members and up to three community members, and I ended up with thirteen members. I think it's imperative to have each principal and an administrator from each building along with parents that have children in that building for real-time feedback. So if I could get some expansion on that number from you guys, that would be great to go ahead and up that to the thirteen.
So I guess my, my stance on that is, is the person that assigned these committees to, to each of you, feel free to have, have some freedom there, just, I mean, be careful about making your committees too large, but if, if you see some, some folks that you want to make sure that are on there, you know, go ahead and make that change, you know, you don't have to ask for formal approval or anything like that. I would, I'm glad that you brought it to the, to the board and just made sure that everybody was aware of it, so.
Okay, thank you.
I'm, I'm good with that, for sure. Does anybody have any concern with adding building principals on that committee?
Nope.
Building principals, do you have any concern with being added to that committee?
I think it happened.
Okay, it's already done?
Little bit.
Okay.
Well, the question was already asked.
Okay, good.
And on that, I did meet with Josh, because obviously we each have our assigned buildings to go to and take some visits in, and I met with Josh a little bit in regard to that strategic planning, and it would be nice to somehow, which is why I want to go back to the whole businesses partnering with labs and stuff in the middle school and expanding in that. We need to get more innovative in our education somehow, and I think that it really needs to start. We need to start highlighting it more so in the middle school so that way it's brought over into the high school and really start partnering up, and I know that the M T S S. coordinator will help a lot with that, but I think that we are missing a piece there that it would be great, and I think that it would also help with enrollment, us being innovative in different ways. I do think that a lot of our community members would really like to see that innovation be towards shop classes, engineering, more hands on stuff that I do think we could do as a community ourselves. I really do. It's just a matter of how do we get there and the conversations that we need to have, which I hope come to the committee. But Josh gave me a lot of good insight on statistics, and statistically shown, some of those numbers weren't as accurate, and I appreciate you even implementing the program after school to really meet the student where they're at and fulfill the needs instead of placing them somewhere where they're just kind of forgotten, and I think that will bring us forward as well. But that's a lot of what I'm hoping to touch in that and a lot of what me and Josh kind of talked about, and if I miss something, feel free to hit me with it.
I have a field trip that I would like someone here to go on.
Okay.
I went last week to Meridian Early College High School.
Okay.
And it was I O P. Everything that I've been trying to question for us to do, they're doing it right now. So it'd be nice for Kevin and someone here to go over it, and they're willing to have anybody come over and take a look at pretty phenomenal what they're doing.
And where is that?
Midland.
It's in Kevin's.
Midland, Sanford, Meridian, right north of Midland.
Okay.
On that, I had also met with N C Risa, as you know, because I went to the organizational meeting that they had, and that was another big takeback from even the N C Risa board was the getting innovative with the ways that we're teaching now, because the drop in enrollment isn't just grant, it's, it's everywhere, and, you know, they're really trying to assess what those number looks like, look like for each district, but the one thing that we cannot assess is that number for homeschooled students, and we're not going to be able to target that. But where can we be really good at highlighting what we do so great? What sets us apart from other school districts? And I don't think that we do the greatest in that area, so if we could really dissect, you know, what is it that grant is so great at? What do we have that's new? What makes us the best school in our district for our children? So there's that drive for parents to want to put their kids here, and there's a lot of opportunity, and I was given some really good feedback on some, even if it's marketing help we need to go meet with them. I know for the, there is going to be a meeting, the, for one, the N C Risa dinner is going to be Tuesday, March twenty-fifth at six P M. So that was Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, six P M., N C Risa dinner. And our discussions at that time are going to be focal points of social media and school boards, A I. discussion, and then also some of that media outreach, so that way we can, another thing that we had discussed in that was how a lot of their marketers and or who's ever doing their, their positive runs, they constantly are hitting so many each week to, to keep that positivity flowing in their communities, on their community pages, on grant, or on the, not grant pages, but their school pages, to just always be reminding people of what's going on that's great in their district. And I know that we have been getting a lot better at that, but I do feel there's a lot of great things that we do that a lot of our parents really don't know about.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
So that will be brought up in there. The I Care Awards are going to be five fifteen P M., April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five at the Dogwood Center, and if we could start thinking of our nominations, they would like us to start bringing that forward. And again, that was April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, of course, at five fifteen. I Care Community Awards, if we have any nominations. Kevin, I don't know if Blake or anybody reached out to you on.
We'll cover it at the superintendent's meeting.
Oh, okay, perfect. Then we got that, and then there will be, I don't have the exact time yet because they're trying to come back with their fall professional development meeting, they're thinking October fourteenth, which is going to be a Tuesday time. I didn't get a confirmation on that yet, but that one they want to also include some board, community communication and onboarding for new board members, and again, good news marketing. So that's some of the stuff that will be covered in those, and then I got a lot of great referrals of people to sit down with and talk to, even outside of these dates. So if the board is ever comfortable with me going further in that, just to see what other districts are doing, how it's working for them, what great they've seen in it. I know that Fremont even said themselves, you know, when they do their community forums, they're looking at what are the, like, the low-hanging fruits that we can do ourselves, and we're starting there, and then from there, we're working our way up to those mid, to those higher hanging fruits. So it's a tier level. They said that they had a tremendous percentage of feedback from their community forums, and they're still reaping benefits from the last time that they did one. So I'm hoping that we can really advertise ours a little bit more, not just through email, but, you know, and I know that comes down to even us personally inviting people, but the more community members that we have that come out, the more insight we get and help us know what they want to see, you know, what's important to you, how can we get innovative? What do you think is the greatest thing that we could be known for to start really retaining our students and add more? And I think that was it. Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody get a chance to spend time in their assigned buildings over the last month?
I did, I went in, met with Jamie, and we talked a little bit about, well, we talked a lot about the curriculum, and she gave me some information. My next step is trying to figure out, we as people, because this is something curriculum has figured out, they've got their own, the staff does. I don't know exactly where that puts us as to go into, with any input or whatever with that, so something I need to speak to.
I spent a little time with Josh, a little bit of time with Kurt and Carolyn a couple weeks ago. Went there at lunch, so it was neat to see the interaction of the kids. Like Josh said, you know, taking away the phones, you know, there's a lot of communication between the kids, you know, you see the kids really talking with each other. I spent a little bit of time in the office, you know, talking in the office, the stuff that they see that they, they might need, so it's something we need to spend more time doing, but, you know, it's interesting, just get their perspective instead of just hearing it here, you know, you can see it in person, so it's good.
Anybody else?
Good job on snow coming to you, Josh. You guys did a really good job organizing how you were going to make sure everybody was somewhere, so every door was covered, the parking lot was covered, the back of the school was cut off, like, they were on it, so I appreciate you really, just, that was awesome. Did a good job.
Was snow coming held in the cafeteria or the gym? Okay.
It was in the elementary, met some of the teachers, observed some things going on in the gym, walked the halls, spent some time talking to the principal there, her name is, what's your name? Just teasing. Good conversation on that. I want to just compliment, the highlight, and we talked about it, was in one of the trophy cases was where the fourth grade, fourth graders, correct? They drew pictures, their artwork of a monster or whatever, and then the high school art class had to make models, you know, of those, and I just want to compliment the collaboration that went on there, and actually, those high school students did a fantastic job of what they created, some very talented students. And if you see the picture and then you see the art, the statue that was made, were they out of clay, I think?
Yeah.
Yeah, glazed and clay, and it's, they made them come to life, that, that picture come to life, and the fourth graders get to keep them, and that.
Well, that's cool.
And so, you know, if you want to go look at that trophy case, it's really, it's really neat, so. Good conversation about some things going on there, but just appreciate Carol's time, probably fifteen minutes or whatever talking, so it's good, it was good.
Good.
I have not had a chance to chat with Carol yet. I have been under the weather, so I figured you would appreciate that I wasn't bringing my cough drops and my tissues and stuff along, so I'll be connecting with you here shortly.
All right. Did you get a chance?
I have not.
Okay, I, I spent a little bit of time in the middle school on early release Wednesday, and the, the team was discussing, discussing co-teaching, and, you know, one thing that really, that really impacted me, you know, I don't have my notes, I took some notes when I was there that day, but some of the things that I wrote down was, you know, the level of comfort that was in the room, elaboration that was in the room, the, the openness that everybody had in sharing their different perspectives and such, and, and that was, that was really cool because it, it really showed how much that team trusts each other. And, you know, the, the one thing that really shocked me is I, I'm in there and I'm thinking that I'm in a, in a room of, of teachers, right? And, yeah, I was. They just didn't all have the title of teacher, and until a couple of them mentioned being like a parapro, I wouldn't have known, you know, and they were, they were just as involved in the, in the conversation, and it was, it was truly a team conversation. And it was, it was truly a team conversation, and that, um, that really hit me. So, um, you know, the, the sense of team that you guys have there at the middle school, um, that's very special. Keep that going for sure, um, because that is, that's not necessarily the easiest thing to build. And you can lose it real easy. And, you know, I, I just saw a overall, just a level of, of comfort and, and essentially family that was, that was in that room. And it was, it was pretty cool to see. So, so really, good job, guys. I, I, and thank you for allowing me to come in and, and join that. I know that sometimes when you got somebody in the room that isn't necessarily there, um, on a, on a regular basis, it can be a, a little unnerving, but, uh, your team didn't seem to mind that I was there at all, you know? So, um, thank you for allowing me to be in there. And I, I hope to make that a fairly regular thing, so if you'll, if you'll have me, so. Alright.
I have one more thing.
One more thing? I said you were done.
I know, I'm sorry. And Nicole, thank you for reminding me. Shout out to you, girl. On Thursday, um, as we all know, unfortunately, we had the incident with Dan's excavating. And I'm so grateful for all the prayers that were answered, that it wasn't as tremendous as it could have been. But I do want to reach out and thank everybody that was involved in making sure all the students were accounted for, the, you know, the middle school, cause I know that we had wrestling going on at that time.
Basketball practices as well.
Yes, and, and thank you for that, yep. So I would just appreciate all the staff members really making sure that the kids were safe. Everybody was away from it. All the prayers for Dan's in general, because they are a, they are great people, great business to our community. They do a lot for us, and I'm just grateful for how it was all handled and the fire departments. Kudos to them too, cause they did amazing.
And they have, they have offered some, some, uh, resources to us as a district that.
They have.
They didn't have to, to offer. We haven't been able to necessarily take them up on it yet.
But maybe someday. Either way, the invitation is there, and they're great partners for us. And I just really appreciated seeing all the prayers put out for them and how much everybody cared and came together. And I think if we continue moving in that direction, we could do lots of positive things. So it just, it just gave faith.
Yes, yes, definitely. Okay, if there is nothing else, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session for OMA 8, MCL 15.268K, security planning and the, consider the purchase of or lease of real property.
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion by Rich and support by Rachel. Any discussion on that? Alright, Rich?
If I could, I would just like to.
Go ahead.
Remind everybody that, you know, the security planning piece of it is, is something that is very important and imperative to the children in our district. And that takes a lot of time to make sure that we're keeping up with just general possible threats or anything in the future. And it's important that we continue moving forward with our planning until we feel.
Yeah.
We're right where we need to be. And I just, I would just want people to know it's that important, that that's why it keeps coming up. And we just have to keep up on.
Yeah, thanks.
I know that we can't put too much out there, but we are diligently working on making sure this district is safe for all of our students, our staff members, and that we're well-thought and planned out in the future.
Yes, and thank you for bringing that up because, you know, last month when we came out of closed session, some people may remember that we actually amended the, the agenda to add another action item after closed session. So, um, you know, we, uh, we discussed some things in the back. We came out here and we actually, uh, we actually approved, uh, to move forward with something. Some of the things that, that we're discussing back there and that we might come back out here and, and approve, hopefully we can approve several things, um, you may not even notice, you may not even see. But, um, there, there are things that, um, it is, it is the most important thing, um, in my opinion, that we are having regular conversations about vulnerabilities and, and how do we close those, those gaps? And, uh, so that is, yes, that is why this is on the agenda on a regular basis, because it is that important. We can't just skip it, you know? We can't, we can't wait until something happens and then go, oh, man, we should have done something.
Absolutely.
Right, so, any other discussion about the motion to go into closed session? Okay, uh, Mr. Vance?
Yay.
Dinette?
Yes.
Jason?
Yay.
Mr. Fish?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, the board is in closed session. If, if everybody would, you know, make sure we convene back there in, like, no more than 10 minutes. Dinette, you do have a few things that you need to sign before.
I know, I was just gonna wait for her to bring them up now.
I just don't want you.
Yeah.